Good evening.
Good evening.
You are in the Rowan County Commissioners Meeting of September 16th, 2019. We are honored that you are here tonight. It appears that the word got out that we have great meetings.[21.61][21.61](Laughter). So it is always an honor to have the community here in whatever capacity, and so we are glad that you're here. We do a couple of things. It's tradition all across our country, and certainly here in Rowan County. We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance, and that's a cool thing. And tonight, we have with us, we're honored to have Boy Scout Troop 442 from First United Methodist Church, David Wilson's here with them. And so Carolyn arranged to have them here. They're gonna come forward and lead us in our pledge. And before that, we have our chaplain that comes forward, our sheriff chaplain, and he offers up what's called a solemnizing prayer. And what a solemnizing prayer is, is it's for us, it's not for you. You're welcome to listen if you like, but what we do, we take very seriously. And we look for wisdom, all the wisdom we can get to make decisions on behalf of this county and on behalf of you, the good people of Rowan County. So Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Dear Lord, we thank for this day. You've blessed us with, thank for the opportunity to come tonight on behalf of the county commissioners, dear Lord. Thank for the hours of preparation and the time they put in for just this meeting tonight, Lord. Thank for the good work they do for this county, dear Lord. Pray you give them the wisdom they need, Lord. We all need wisdom, and especially they need wisdom to be able to direct their county in the right manner. Blessings upon them tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
If the Boy Scouts will come forward, we'll have them lead us in our pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Men, thank you for being here with us tonight.
Mr. Chairman, since there's not many seats, my seat's available, so it'd be a good night to get a good donation for shoulder badge with prayer for anybody who wants my seat tonight.[189.37][189.37](Laughter).
So according to the chaplain, he's selling his seat for a good cause up there. So before we get going too far, this is a good crowd tonight. We are regulated by the Fire Marshal, and we've been told we may have some issues. We're only allowed to have ninety, ninety-nine in here, and we have folks that keep coming in. And so, so, so though, this could be our fault, we didn't anticipate a turnout like this. Sometimes we try to have an overflow room with video conferencing going on there. We don't have that tonight. So are we gonna have, Jay, are we gonna have to?
We're gonna have about eight standing.
So we're gonna, we're only gonna be able to have, according to the Fire Marshal, about eight people standing.
They can wait in the hallway.
So if y'all wanna wait in the hallway, we're not picking on anyone, but this is, it's a legal issue. So we can have about eight folks standing. So kinda first come, first served. If some of you just came in, we hate to do this. This is being recorded. Is it, it's not live, though?
Not a live feed. They, we could open that door and let them sit in there.
Can we do that? We could open these side doors, and we have a conference room next door over here. Sorry about, can everyone hear? All right, there we go. All right. All right, so we have our agenda in front of us. I have one change to the agenda, and that is, let's see, Commissioners, you've been given, actually I have two, given an agenda, consent agenda item from the sheriff that's in front of you. That'll be item, actually, it'll be O, I wrote down, because we've got another, the library contract that was provided for us, that'll be N. So I've got the library, library contract here, I'll pass out to you. And then, that'll be N. And then O will be the sheriff's grant approval issue. So those are the only two adjustments that I have to the agenda. Anyone have anything else?
Seven.
If you could delete number seven.
Okay, we'll delete item number seven. And do we need to add any separate item to closed session?
If you just wanna add to discuss the hell matter.
Okay, so we'll, yeah, we'll add a personnel item to closed, closed session as well. All right, any others? All right, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, we have the minutes provided for us from September 3rd, our last meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as provided?
移到
All right, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we have the amended consent agenda, items A through O. Do we have a motion to approve that?
移到
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have public comment period now.
I think, I think they might be here for the, for the solar farm.
Yeah, so we're gonna have a hearing for the solar farm. Separate from that, we have just public comment. If someone wants to get up, so those of you who are here for the solar farm, you'll be given time during that item to discuss that. If any of you, so I've got one, two, three folks.
(Inaudible).
I've, I've got three folks that have signed up for public comment. If that is regarding the solar issue, then you can get up and talk if you want, probably don't want to, you can wait until we tackle that issue. So I have Jim Denham, and John Ware, and Kathy Webb, Kathy Webb, so, yes, sir?
Yes.
Okay, do you wanna just wait? Okay, all right, so then we'll, we'll just pass over the public comment area then.
Greg.
Yes, sir?
The TV at the bottom of the stairs is on, showing the media.
All right, so our county attorney has told us that the television, for those of you who are outside, the television at the bottom of the stairs is on, and it's live. So if anyone wanted to watch down there, welcome to do that. All right, everyone cozy? Can we get anyone anything? Any drinks, snacks?[691.23][691.23](Laughter). President of Catawba's here wanting a ham and cheese sandwich. That be good? Okay. All right, we'll move on then. Item number three, public hearing for the transportation grant applications. That's item number three. And Franklin Barnes. Franklin, welcome. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Good evening to the board. And the body. My name is Franklin Barnes. I'm here on behalf of Rowan Transit, coming to the board today, asking for permission to apply for several FY21 application grants. I believe those grants are outlined in your packet. I'll touch a few of those to explain the difference, and then I'll take any questions that you may have. The first one is the 5311. That is a community transportation grant. That's an administrative grant, covers two positions for our operations. The second one is 5310. 5310 is a competitive grant, has no county match. It's a rural grant, and it covers several different entities. It covers Rowan Transit's work with dialysis transportation also, along with our vocational center. And Trinity Living are a couple of our entities that work under that rural portion of that The next one that you'll see is 5307. 5307 is a federal grant. This grant subsidize Rowan Transit with the express. That express runs from Salisbury, the city of Salisbury, China Grove, Landis, as well The next one that is listed is a combination equipment grant. That grant combines 5311, 5307, and 5339. It covers the replacement vehicles. We are due for three replacement vehicles in FY21. They will meet their useful life. The useful life has been dropped on our vehicles to 100,000 miles. We do have three that will meet those numbers. The last one that you'll see is 5310. That's the urban portion of 5310, services the county through our Trinity Living Center, also with our Rowan vocational opportunity, as well as we do some dialysis and medically We are asking the board to conduct the public hearing for 2021 grants. We're also asking that the county manager be identified as the authorized official according to the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Franklin. Any questions for Franklin?
What's the, you said the mileage, the mileage dropped on the vans? That was because of federal regulation or the grants?
Yes, sir, it is. Just the wear and tear, they were noticing that they needed to drop the miles. So they dropped it probably about 40,000 miles.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So according to the item you provided, the total of the grants is 718,215 dollars. The total county match of that is 55,419 dollars. Is that right?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And that 55,000, this may be a question for Leslie. This is part of our annual budget. We've, we were ready for this, and it's budgeted?
This, this grant application is actually for fiscal year 2021.
That is correct.
So it's not this fiscal year, but will be the next.
Any other questions for Franklin? All right, hang on, and we'll, so we're gonna conduct public hearings, what we're required to do when we do these transportation grant applications. So we'll open up the floor for public comment, if there is anyone, if anyone would like to speak for or against. And we have one. Welcome. No, it's okay.
Hi, how are you? Good, good. Good evening. I'm Nan Bure. I'm the Director of Ruffey Home Senior Center, which is a focal point for aging services in Rowan County. So I am speaking in support of the need for increased transportation for older adults and those with disabilities in this county. We are very thankful for Rowan Transit Systems, which provides individual transportation assistance. Keep in mind that for rides not getting paid through Medicaid or waivers, this service is available only one day a week for each area of the county. Imagine if you had to ride, needed a ride on Tuesday, and your doctor was off that day. Or you needed to see your doctor on short notice, and your transportation day was yesterday. Do you call your busy working relative and ask them to take time off of work to take you? Or better yet, do you call your elderly neighbor who still drives, but maybe shouldn't be, to take you? The ability to get where you need to go is key to meeting our basic needs of daily living. So Rowan Transit System also provides transportation for our older adults to get a ride to the Lunch Club, which is offered at six sites around the county by Ruffey Home Senior Center. This program provides a nutritious meal, vital socialization, and education. Due to funding constraints, West Rowan participants are offered rides only three days a week, and East Rowan only four days a week. There is now a waiting list for older adults to receive a ride to a Lunch Club due to transportation constraints. We have older adults who have also tried the service, and because the route is too long, again, one driver, one vehicle having to go, they have to decline the service because it's too much for them physically, or incontinence issues, those kinds of things. Rowan Transit does not have enough drivers and vehicles to meet our current need, let alone increasing demand. You all are aware of the Home and Community Care Block Grant, and it is a primary funder for the rides to the Lunch Club programs, along with supporting the general transportation of one day a week in each area of the county. HCCBG funding is not meeting the need of transportation now. The Lunch Club program participant meal numbers would increase if we had enough transportation to get our folks there. Our riders want that ability to get general rides two days a week. We've had that request in each part of the county for medical appointments, grocery, pharmacy, and personal errands. The grant applications before you are to address increasing demand for vital dialysis transportation, vocational opportunities, and Trinity Living Center for daily care, socialization, and safety. I am in support of additional funds that can be obtained and additionally provided by you folks as the county to increase transportation needs for older adults and those with disabilities. Rowan County's population is aging. North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management says Rowan County has almost 25% of our population at age 60-plus now, and in 10 years, we will increase our number of older adults to over 28% of our county's population. Everyone wants that ability to take care of their own needs for daily living, and transportation is fundamental, key to a healthy life. So I urge you to seek additional funding for transportation, and to seek to increase the county's financial support for transportation for our citizens. Thank you so much for your time to listen to me.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, then we'll close public comment. And Commissioners, what we'll need to do is make a motion identifying the county manager as the authorized official to make the necessary federal and state assurances and certifications on application documents.
移到
All right?
Second.
In a second, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Franklin.
Thank you.
All right, have a great week.
You gotta make a motion to approve the resolution.
All right, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, public hearing to consider changes to personnel ordinance. Kelly?
Good evening. I'm Kelly Natoli. I'm the Human Resources Director for Rowan County. I bring to you tonight a request for a public hearing to consider changes to portions of the Rowan County Personnel Ordinance, as well as a resolution to dissolve the Personnel Commission. The reason I bring these changes before you primarily stem from 14 different administrative code changes that have occurred as it relates to personnel. The State Human Resources Office, we've been working with closely. We've known about these regulations for a while, but they weren't actually published until recently. And upon going through the regulations, we have determined that we will need to make some changes to both our Personnel Ordinance and our Personnel Policy Manual. However, the Personnel Policy Manual has to come after we change the ordinance. So their request here is to, is provided to you as a summary on a cover sheet, as well as the proposed changes to the ordinance. These are all attached. I welcome any questions, if you have any specific questions.
Kelly, just as a point of reference, would you tell folks the last time the Personnel Commission met?
Recently, they met, maybe just two months ago. That was once in eight years.
Eight years, okay.
Yes. That's my understanding. Tell me if I'm wrong, Erin, but I was.
He hadn't been here eight years either.
Okay.
He wouldn't know.
Okay, well Jay can maybe confirm for us then.
I can't remember that far back.[1402.13][1402.13](Laughter).
I don't remember much in the last eight years, but about three times in 15 years is about all we've, all we've met, so.
I spent a lot of years on the Personnel Commission, and I believe we were called one time, so.
Okay.
All right, so you're asking us to do two things.
Yes.
One would be to consider the proposed amendments that you provided for us in our packet.
Yes.
To the Rowan County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2. So that has to do with personnel.
Correct.
And then also approve a resolution to dissolve the Personnel Commission. So we would do that after a public, public hearing.
Okay.
Okay? All right, well, here we are again. We will open the floor for, this will be a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak on these issues of Rowan County Code of Ordinances, then speak now. All right, seeing none, we'll close the floor. And Commissioners, do we have a motion to change to the amendments, the Rowan County Code of Ordinances, and approve the resolution to dissolve the Personnel Commission?
移到
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Kelly. All right, next item is quasi judicial hearing for CUP 03-19, which is China Grove Solar. And so I have a speech that I'm required by law to read, and it goes like this. "The hearing for consideration of CUP 03-19 is now in session, and will focus on an application submitted by China Grove Solar LLC to construct a 65-megawatt solar energy system on part of tax parcels 456-104, 456-151, and 458-003 located near, along Neal, Sherrills Ford, and Old Bradshaw Roads. If you feel that any board member may have conflict of interest in hearing the case, please address the board now, prior to any testimony or information being presented. When the board enters into deliberations to decide the case, no further testimony may be presented. The board will render one of the following three decisions. One will approve the permit as requested, or with additional conditions. Two will continue the request, or three deny the request. All parties who plan to testify in this case must come forward," and you can do that now, "and be sworn in. Those who testify must state their name and address at the podium for the benefit of the board's clerk. All material presented must be given to the clerk and will become part of the record. This board can only accept sworn testimony, and no hearsay evidence is admissible." And our county planning staff, Shane Stewart, will present the case. So if there's anyone else that's gonna testify on this.
Can we, can we do the applicant first?
Yes, so we'll, we'll do.
Let's just do, let's just do the applicant first.
We'll do the applicant first, all right? And so we'll swear them in.
(Inaudible) everybody squeeze in, get your left hand on the Bible, and raise your right. Lay your left hand on the Bible. Do you swear or find that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, so Shane Stewart will, will begin, and I'll just say one thing that's unscripted. We do, we, we really try to be respectful in here, and I think everyone that's here wants that as well. So there's gonna be things in here tonight that some of you may or may not agree with, but we're, we're gonna be kind and respectful to one another, and we'll get through this in a real positive way, okay? We're gonna go as far in this as we can. We're gonna hear from our folks tonight from China Grove Solar, and then we're gonna hear from folks from the community. We may or may not get through all of this tonight, and so we have a plan for if we don't. And so we hope that that'll be acceptable for everybody, okay? All right? All right, Shane?
Shane Stewart, Rowan County Planning Office, 402 North Main Street, Salisbury. So the application before us this evening is for a solar energy system under a conditional use permit. It's on the property that the chairman just read, but Big Harry LLC, Mia Holshouser, Brian Bradshaw property, and it's located on multiple different properties here. I think it's better just to look at the, the overall vicinity. You see the parcels in question outlined in red, and they total about 428 acres. And the property primarily fronts on Neal Road, but also has frontage on Sherrills Ford and Old Bradshaw Road in terms of public right-of-way and frontage. Taking a look at this shot here from 2018 aerial photo, you see the site is primarily wooded, but does have some areas where trees were removed previously a few years ago. And you also take note of a Duke Energy Transmission Line that comes through the site here in yellow. There's also the Draft Branch Tributary that meets up back with Draft Branch here, but this is a tributary. The blue area you see are the 100-year floodplain. So the applicant has a pretty large site planned. It's broken down into three sheets. This is the overall sheet, just I wanted to touch on first. So the proposal would be for a 65-m- So the proposal would be for a 65-megawatt solar energy system. It would entail creation of a new substation that we'll touch on here shortly, interconnection into the transmission line. It will either be a single-axis tracking system that the board saw with the Saul Road application, Duke Energy, and that's a option that would just, the panels would rotate with the sun from east to west. And also, still early, but it very well could be a fixed tilt system as well. Now, this is the 13th application the county's received. The 12 others have all been connecting to the distribution line. The, when you see in your packet, they range from 1.3 to 6.9, so this by far is the largest, but just as a point of order.
Shane, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you, how large? Did you see how large the parcels or megawatts were?
Not yet.
Megawatts.
Okay. There's something between there and we stopped. Yeah, all right.
So the, Note 3 here, I want to point that out too. It's on each of the, in the notes on the site plan. So this information here is, you know, there could be some change to it after the fact. So I wanted to point that out to the board, that that is something that they're proposing within here, and if there's something specific, for example, inverter location, there's none shown, the location for the driveways, the laydown, can be subject to change.
Well, what, what control do we have in that? I mean, if we approved this, do they just, I mean, you see the questions that raise?
Sure. Well, good point. So what I would suggest, for example, here on the Sherrills Ford site, this is a location of a laydown. It may not be exactly here. If there was a concern of the board of where the laydown areas are, it may be a condition, they might be within X feet of a property line, or not along Sherrills Ford Road, et So you also have within each area, I'm going to focus first on the Sherrills Ford Road piece. The light tan says, "Area, existing trees to remain." I guess I should back up. As a minimum, there's a 50-foot setback, which you see the crosshatch areas here are 50-foot offset from the property line. There's some areas where the applicant has chosen a sort of volunteered setback above the 50 feet. In this case here, it's 120. And also, a retention of existing trees on site, in this location. And then in the orange is an enhanced buffer, which is Note 4 in your site plan notes, and it contains this type buffer with the evergreens and then some additional trees as well. So you'll see this throughout each sheet, the south area, Sherrills Ford Road, retention of trees, additional setback. When you see this, that's the minimum standard, a 50-foot offset, and no additional offerings This on Neal Road would be the proposed substation location. And again, we would be, it would be up to Duke Energy for the siding of that location. In terms of the specific location off the road, and of course, the assumption is obviously has to be located near the transmission line, and this is environmentally sensitive area, so that very well may be the, the location chosen. But, again, going back to the board's conditions, that can be discussed as well, about what that limitation could be.
Would you explain, would you explain exactly what a substation is for, and what size it would be?
Don't know the specifics, but obviously, it's also to convert energy. You know, you've got a certain level that's coming through that cannot be fed on...
From the, from the solar units onto the power lines?
Looking at this area along Neal Road, the part in pink that you see is zoned residential suburban. These areas do not allow solar. It's part of the, the overall boundary, but is not proposed for any improvements. You see two locations here that are zoned RA. It would be for the laydown and access to the facility. But solar's not allowed here, and that's why you're seeing the pink area. So, it's all part of, this is the Big Harry tract, but that part is zoned as RS, so the, the panels could begin right beyond that location. This is also, and the reason it was zoned RS, back in 97, there was proposed subdivision, Highview Farms, I believe, and only one lot, to my knowledge, was conveyed out, and it's the Trosper Residence here. And also, I didn't point out, but there's a lot of other information on the, the site plan. There's multiple driveway connections that would be subject to DOT permitting. I probably should point out one on Old Bradshaw Road. One of staff's concern, early on, was no laydown shown off that road, because it, even though it's a DOT street, it's about like John Rainey Road, when we looked at that solar application, it's a dirt road about 14 feet wide. Lots of concerns on that location. There is a driveway connection proposed there, but no laydown. Hopefully, this will not confuse, and it will help provide context to all the maps we've seen, and what you have in your packet. I have several pictures to show you the area, and I'm trying to take the overall boundary and then show you the location I'm focusing on for the specific pictures. And right now, we're going to look at Old Bradshaw Road. And this top-left image is looking straight into the Holshouser-Bradshaw property. And as I go around, these yellow arrows are intended to show you the approximate location of where the solar arrays would be in relation to the improvement. So at each one of these, when you see an arrow, the solar would be proposed here, it's across the street here, and on this corner from that picture. At the end of Old Bradshaw Road, on the backside, this would be the solar arrays at the end of the road. And then, this is not a very good image, down the long driveway, there's another Bradshaw Residence. Several homes through here, and the Laity Property, it's on the north side, the west, and the south. This structure up here is actually on the subject property, the Bradshaw property. 535 and 545 and 55 here, three additional residences. All right, I do not have good pictures for this area, and honestly, I didn't feel real comfortable going out and taking multiple shots along this section of road. So I have one here at this residence. Also want to point out, I did not go down Webb Farm Road since this private. This is 4325, the Shove Property. The panels would be to the rear of that section. It's, it's consistent, there's about five lots through there, maybe more, and maybe half dozen or so homes. Coming up Sherrills Ford Road, at the location where the property's on both sides. This is the Wilson Residence. Solar's proposed just to the left of the image here, and across the road. Summit Residence, and it would be proposed to the rear and to the right side, looking east, and then west, this is on both sides, the Big Harry property. Borders the Salem Lutheran Church. Solar's to the back, looking straight into the cemetery. Cuthbertson Residence, across the road on the south side, it would be to the rear. See a row of homes here along the frontage before you get to Neal Road on the south side. And making the turn and coming back down this way, on South on Neal. Looking back to the intersection at this driveway here, this home, it's right off the edge of the picture, to the right. This is the subject property. Looking into the Scott Residence Drive, it would be surrounding that parcel. And across the Goodnight Residence, this would be on the west side of Neal Road. Coming down to the Transmission Crossing, this is the Big Harry property. And looking down the driveway to the Orbison Residence, and two homes owned by Big Harry. And this is South on Neal, looking back east at the Transmission where the crossing is. And at the Trosper Residence, this is the one parcel that was in the Highview Farms. And at the crossing down at Draft Branch Tributary. And lastly, down towards the Neal Estates Inn, the Leeser Residence at 750, and also he owns property across the road, and the facility will be located here to the left. Don't expect the audience...
Is that as far, is that as far east as it's going? Those, those two residents right there?
Yes, sir. That one, 750's here, and then 705 is here. So technically, it does go further east, but I didn't go down Cameron Glenn subdivision that comes to that point here.
So you're saying it goes in front?
This was the home at 750, it'd be across the road. I should point out, this area here does not propose for solar. And the ribbon along Neal Road is RS, so the panels could be located beyond the RS area and in here. And also, I believe even back here, which I would defer to the site plan to confirm. This is definitely not something that the audience could see, and probably even the board, but this is in your packet. Hopefully provide additional information, and what staff did was looking at GIS, the 2018 photos, our property lines, and looking at the nearest residence, residential accessory structure, I think there's even a pool that may be included, and how far that is to a property line. Now, mind you, it doesn't account for the 50-foot setback, and it also doesn't account for any screening they're doing, or volunteered setback. But that gives you the exact distance away, as we can best tell, from the property line. And also, a little comment based on, is there wooded areas in between? Could it be retained on the Big Harry tract? I think only, I don't think the Bradshaw tract had anything that could be retained, but, and also, maybe even their parcels, if it had wooded areas. So I tried to provide some comment in there, and that's in your packet of information. So the Western Area Land Use Plan does not have specific recommendations for individual land uses, it's more broad. It does talk about, this is in Area 2, and it does talk about encouraging medium-density residential development. For that area, you noticed in the report, we've approved two in those areas, one of which was John Rainey Road, the smallest solar site, and also on a, a dirt road, well, well off the 150. And also, the previous one, Saul Solar, which was also well off the road, and had some considerable topo challenges. The Millbridge Scenic Byway, this is the map showing you the location. There's Sherrills Ford Road, and there's 51 in the state, and this is the only one in the county. I believe the 801 part was added a couple years ago, but from GS 13618, the DOT powers, one of which is to designate portions of scenic highways. But also, I wanted the board to see that the department can remove, it does say upon application, if certain locations meet these standards below A, B, and C. It talks about being located adjacent to a commercial or industrial activity. Does say permanent, but at any rate, that's information you have in your packet too, in the staff report. Public notice, obviously, folks knew about it, but I will say, in the way the board and what I tried to share with the public, when the Board of Commissioners on September 3rd adopted or scheduled the hearing, the very next day, staff sends letters out. So that will give folks, you know, probably nine days' notice, once they get it in hand. But that's typical per our process. As soon as the board schedules, we send out letters immediately.
How do you decide who gets a letter?
The areas here you see in yellow, well, actually, the blue areas are the application limits, or excuse me, the property boundaries. What's in yellow, per our ordinance, we send notice within 100 feet of that boundary. So anything you see in white, those folks did not get a letter. And that's been our ordinance standard for 21 years, if, you know, obviously, it comes up from time to time, should it be more. So we went with what the ordinance states. And this would total 57 adjoining owners, that was not including the applicant and duplicate property, or owners that own more than one tract. We posted four signs on the site. We did not post one north on Sherrills Ford, not easy to post that side. We did post the south side on a tree. It's not the most visible, it's the best we could do. We posted also here at Neal Road, on a utility pole, and another here beside the Trosper Residence on the utility pole, and one on Old Bradshaw Road as well. That was posted the very next day, 9/5. Reposted this last Friday. It fell down. Don't know if we're going to get right into procedures, but any questions of the board based on what I provided?
Seeing you know, noticed that you hadn't been down Webb Road because it was a private road, is that something that the staff can go out and do, contact the property owner and go out and do, since they do have a very large area of adjacent property?
We definitely can. Hopefully, the, the pictures more or less just adds to what we already have, in terms of the aerial photos, this map. You know, on Webb Farm, some of the areas were vacant and wooded, but we try to just capture improvements, but as you noticed, there were probably, I don't know, we, we probably took 100 pictures, but didn't use that many. So if the board wants more information, we can definitely gather that.
All right, any other questions for Shane? All right, don't go far.
I have two cross-examination. Would you confirm that solar was not listed, or... I'm sorry, I'm Tom Terrill. I will introduce myself momentarily as attorney for the applicant. But would you just confirm, Mr. Stewart, that when the 2009 land use plan was adopted, solar was not a listed use?
Correct.
And all of the solar facilities you've approved since then have been under the 2009 plan?
Correct.
That's all. Thanks.
All right, if there's no other questions for Shane, then we'll move to petitioner comments. So whoever's up for your team?
We'll have another one.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. It's not my first time in Rowan County, but I always enjoy being here. I'm Tom Terrill. I am an attorney in Greensboro with the firm Fox Rothschild. My address is 300 North Green Street. I'm here tonight representing China Grove Solar, but also with me tonight are several other entities and experts, including Cooperative Solar, which is the development entity, Harry Welch, who is one of the primary property owners, Mr. Bradshaw, Ms. Holshouser, and several other experts. several other experts who are here. There have been several questions already asked by you, and I think questions in your mind. Before we start the hearing, I'm going to ask Latham Grimes, who is the president of Cooperative Solar, to explain three things. First, why is this larger than a 5-megawatt solar farm, and why is it 65-megawatt? Number two, there was a question about the substation, I'd like to get that off the table and have that answered right now. But number three, there have been rumors spreading throughout the community about solar farms always being done by out-of-state companies. That could not be farther from the truth. Interestingly, it's a rumor started by an out-of-state company. But I would like Mr. Grimes to introduce the entities here to show you how North Carolina-based they are. Mr. Grimes?
Evening, everyone. My name is Latham Grimes. I live at 600 Lake Shore Lane in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. Pleased to be here tonight with members of the board and the community. And so, I work for a company called Cooperative Solar. I've been working on utility-scale solar development since 2012. I've been personally involved with probably 150 at least that have been built in this state, in some form or fashion. We're here primarily on behalf of a company called Pine Gate Renewables, which is based in Asheville, North Carolina. We tend to focus on early-stage work, like land use and zonings, and Pine Gate would construct, finance, own and operate it for the long haul, at least 25 years. We've got a pretty good team of, we have a really good team of experts here tonight who can answer a lot of the specific questions. And I'm gonna be available to answer any questions about ownership, about sort of long-term plans, kind of how we got here, things like that. I do, before I introduce the team, I'll address some of these quick questions, and any questions folks want to fire at me, please do. This project is larger than what you've seen in Rowan County, and in lots of the early-stage projects in this state tended to be that 2- to 5-megawatt range, as things have progressed in North Carolina, and we are now the second most successful state in the Union for solar development. But these projects have gotten larger, and that is, and they interconnect at the transmission, which is a much higher voltage, and that is mainly driven by the regulatory policy in North Carolina, and Duke Energy, and the desire to push the cost down. The cost of solar being generated now is cheaper than natural gas or coal, it would be in the about 3.5 cent range. And so that is achieved in part by the scale of the project. That's why they've gotten larger. There was a question about the substation. That location is actually pretty set in stone with Duke Energy, but the point of a substation is, it steps up or increases the voltage of the power created. The solar facility itself creates at a low voltage, and that electricity is then converted from DC power to AC power, and then is stepped up in voltage to reach the voltage on this transmission line, so that it can travel long distances. So that is the point of the substation. It would be about 150 foot by 150 foot square, and would look like pretty much any substation that's in the community, or that you see in the county or the town. I think those are some of the things, but I wanted to also just kind of point out real quickly, the timeline on this. We, our company got involved earlier this summer. We met, I believe, with the planning staff in late June. We filed this application, and in mid-July, we held a voluntary community meeting on August 1st, that had pretty good turnout, I thought. Since that time, we've gotten a lot of email addresses and phone numbers, and we've had a lot of correspondence, and there are folks here that I've corresponded with 10 or 12 times since that time. And what we've tried to do, we're very mindful of the way this thing would impact its neighbors, and the best way to address that is with the setbacks, is with vegetative buffers, or is with leaving existing trees. And so we've done all three of those things, in large part, speaking directly to the landowners who abut this property, and that's something we're willing to do. I'm a big believer in solar, but it works best when it's a good neighbor, and that's what we want this to be. I know that the visual of this seems large, you know, and it is large, but that is the shape of the parcel that Mr. Welch, who is our main, primary landowner, whose family's owned this land for many decades, I think he's had some, he can speak in a moment, I think he's had some other problems, but, not problems, but things that he's pursued on this land, but it doesn't really perk, and so residential is not as easy a use. This is probably, this is a good use for that kind of land. This facility would be about $70 million in investment, it would add to the tax base in the county, it wouldn't require a lot of services, no light, no meaningful sound, no kids to the school system, and it's, in that regard, it's a positive thing, in my opinion. But I'm gonna generally let the experts speak about its health and safety. So we've got Tommy Cleveland, who was formerly of NC State, he's in Raleigh, works for Advanced Energy, he can talk about decommissioning and health and safety. Got Corey Howell, who is from Kimley Horn, which is a civil engineer, so kind of an engineering expert in perspective. We've got Reynolds Neely, who is a planning expert from Ashburn, North Carolina, who's here with us. Rich Kirkland, who has studied valuations and appraisals, particularly for the adjacent and nearby homes. You know, Mr. Terrell has already introduced himself, and Rex Young, who is with my office in Raleigh. So we're the ones that are involved with this. If we're able to move forward, we'll be the ones that'll see this thing through to completion, and we'll make sure that it's done, you know, with whatever conditions that the board feels are appropriate. So again, I'll be available to jump in and answer any questions at any time, but I'm mostly gonna let the smart experts talk about their specific area of expertise.
Mr. Grimes, what did you say the total investment is?
This will be about $70 million.
I have a couple of questions. When you, you were talking about setbacks just a moment ago. Is your plan to have setbacks along all perimeters of the site?
Yes, ma'am. So first of all, in the ordinance requires a minimum 50-foot setback everywhere, and so that was the starting point. Then what we've done is every place that we come near residence, we have, in most cases, gone back 100 or 120 feet. Some of that was based on back-and-forth conversations. Some landowners have a desire to keep existing trees, and so that's why we actually changed and added that demarcation. In other cases, we're planting a buffer, and we've proposed an enhanced buffer, we specify what type of vegetation we would include, so accent trees, as well as kind of an evergreen green screen. But we got a lot out of that meeting we had, quite frankly. Mr. Shields mentioned Bradshaw Road, and he's right, that road is not a road that's suitable for a lot of traffic or construction. So our original plan that we showed up with at the community meeting had a lay-down yard off Bradshaw Road, and after talking to two folks that lived on that road, it became very clear that wasn't suitable. So we got rid of it, and it's gone, and we relocated that. We do still have a driveway entrance there, but that's for just long-term maintenance, that's more or less grass cutting and a pickup truck, maybe, once a week.
Excuse me, what is a lay-down?
So a lay-down yard, no, it's a good question. So this project, you know, is in, when you build it, that's when most of your activity's gonna happen, and it would be a lot of traffic for a relatively short period of time, it would probably take six months, I would say, to build this whole thing. But so the lay-down yard would be a location, usually what we would do is use logging mats, so it's temporary, and you're not using gravel, and you would create an area where trucks could drop off materials. So most of this construction is just-in-time construction. Everything is delivered to the site, and then it's constructed there. So you have driven steel posts, and then you have an aluminum and steel rack, and then, of course, the panels that are installed on the racking. You will have a couple of collectors, inverters, and transformers located throughout, and then, of course, the substation.
And, okay, so you're part of, or this is part of Pine Gate?
So Pine Gate Renewables is a company based in Asheville, North Carolina. It's been around, it had a different name called FLS, but they've been active in one form or fashion since about 2008 in the state, and they have, they're currently working on about a dozen large projects similar to this. Most of the power of these large projects, it actually is bid through a, and what's called an RFP process with Duke. So Pine Gate already has two of those projects, actually, which are bigger than this, one are 80 megawatts, one in Jones County, and the other in Yancey County, that are moving forward and will get built soon. So they would own this, they would build it, finance it, and own it, and operate it out of Asheville, North Carolina.
Okay, so, I'm just trying to get this straight in my head. So Pine Gate, or Pine Gate is part of Cooperative Solar, or you're Cooperative Solar?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am, I'm sorry. So yeah, so I'm Cooperative Solar, and so, again, we are, we are sort of early-stage developers. They are more focused on the construction and building. We are good at working with communities, we often will find sites, we'll work on the land use, we'll work on the wetlands, there's a lot of regulatory process, there's a lot of due diligence that's done, so we do all of that. We take it up to shovel-ready, for the most part. And then Pine, so I've been on the phone 10 times with them today, and they're highly attuned to what's going on here, but-
So that I'm clear that it is two separate companies?
That's right.
But you're kind of like the forerunner, and they come in and finish up?
That's right, that's right. They're a much bigger company, and have the kind of financial wherewithal to, you know, these are large, expensive assets, so it's not the kind of typical thing that just an individual would own, much like any natural gas plant or coal plant.
Yeah. So, do you know how many projects they've done as a company thus far?
Pine Gate? Easily over 100. They are probably building about 30 this year, mainly in North Carolina and South Carolina. They're currently building 100-megawatt project, they did a 50 and 100, and just broke ground on another 100 in South Carolina. This would be their first large one in North Carolina, but they've done probably 15 to 18 of the 5-megawatt size. Solar, this is bigger, but it is very much kind of like building blocks. It's small units, and you just replicate again and again.
Is there another one in North Carolina this size?
You mean that Pine Gate owns, or?
No, just period.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Right now, I was trying to count, I can count it on my hand, at least 10 that exist today that are larger than this, and I would say, within, if, you know, this would take two to three years to get built, this won't be at the top 20 in North Carolina. But there's 80-megawatt facilities in Nash County, in Rutherford County, there's one in Halifax County, there's one in Vance County, there's, there's a 65, 60 to 65 about this size in Monroe, outside of Monroe in Union County, there's a 75 in Warsaw, North Carolina. So this is, this is big, and it's big for Rowan County, and I appreciate that.
How many of those counties have a population over 100,000 people? Two?
Prob, yeah, Nash County might, but, Nash does? I'd say Nash County.
So that's the only one that you can think of?
Speaking off the top of my head, yes, sir, that's the only one I can say for sure would have, would have more people than that.
I wonder, I'm not very bright, so you have to be simple with me. Would you explain to me why, or what the definition of a utility is? In reading about these in other states, there are many states that anything over 50, just depending on the state, or 65, would fall into the category of a utility. This particular location has 430 acres. We have Southern Power in our county, and they don't own but 75, 76 acres of land, and they are a utility. And of course, Duke Energy generates all the power for this region with an area of a little over 300 acres. So can you, can you give me the definition of that, and just why the solar farm wouldn't fall into the category of a utility?
Certainly, well, sir, I would, so now, if by utility, you mean like a regulated utility under this-
Yes, sir, like Duke Energy, like Southern Power?
Right, so those, so those companies, and this is, this is my understanding, but for a utility, it's regulated by the state of North Carolina, and they supply power and sell it at retail. So they would sell to members of the community, and have, you know, monthly bills and things like that. So that is a utility, and in North Carolina, you're right, you have Duke Energy, Progress, and Legacy Duke, you have Dominion, and then, of course, you have the co-ops and the munis, which are considered utilities, but they're regulated in a different way. So this project would be, in the industry, it's just a generator, but it's an independent power producer. Under the state of North Carolina, Duke has a monopoly. We are not, I'm not allowed to sell you power if I generate it with this facility. I can only sell it to Duke, and only at a prescribed rate. They will then resell it to the members of the community. So that's the difference.
Wait a minute, you're telling me that, that they are required by law to sell to Duke Power?
Correct.
So they cannot be a retail seller?
Correct, that is absolutely correct.
But why would they not then fall in the category of a utility?
Well, so, again, I may, I may just be not understanding, but we would not be able to, I believe, you have to, if you're selling at retail to members of the community-
That was a requirement to sell to a utility.
That's a utility. Right, we're not allowed, we're not allowed to do that. Only a utility is allowed to sell power at retail in North Carolina. And so we sell wholesale power to Duke Energy.
Are you under contract with Duke Power at this point?
There is not a contract to sell the power, so this project would bid into essentially a competitive process, and hope that Duke will select this project to buy power.
Okay, if Duke Power is the only people selling power, who else would you sell to?
So legally, we really can't, other than, other utilities are allowed, from other states are allowed to come in here. So you mentioned Southern Power. Southern Power actually owns a solar facility that's 80-megawatts, so larger than this, in Rutherford County, and they sell power, actually, well, they're selling power to Duke Energy still, but in the future, they would be allowed to sell power to some of the munis and whatnot, municipals or co-ops. But we're, it's pretty limited. We really, I mean, this is a monopoly state, it's a regulated monopoly, and we're not allowed, I would, in many other states, this facility would be able to sell to companies, to school systems, to business owners, to, and we're not allowed to do that legally in North Carolina, unless and until the law changes.
Mr. Grimes, I have one more question. How long have you worked for Cooperative Solar, and how many projects here in North Carolina have you worked on?
So I'll answer that two ways. So before Cooperative Solar, so in 2012, I was the general counsel of Strata Solar, and that was the company that really started doing most of the utility-scale projects in North Carolina. And so my responsibilities there were both for development, as well as finance, tax equity, and then the operations. So I've got a pretty broad understanding of how these things work, and have seen them start to finish, and seen when things go right and when things go wrong. In 2014, because I don't like working for big companies, I, with a partner, started Cooperative Solar, and so we're, we have been working on that since 2014. And so that's primarily what I do, and we would, so I worked on about 100 projects at Strata, and then Cooperative Solar has been a part of, I'd say, in the high 30s. At this point, about 15 of which have been built. I also have a-
Can we get you to hold on a second? Do we need to reboot the system?
So to finish answering your question, so we, about 30 of them here on the early stage with Cooperative Solar. I also have, I'm sort of involved in all things solar. I'm fortunate to be a small partner in an operations and maintenance company based in Durham, called Carolina Solar Services, which does electrical and vegetation maintenance, got a couple of great young founders there. That company's grown to 55 employees, from two employees just four years ago. So, and we, and if anyone wants to see pictures, I've got pictures of sheep, because we use sheep for cutting the grass, and so I'm proud of that, too.
I would just say, as a civilian, I just had solar panels installed this weekend, and Duke does have a monopoly. There is absolutely no question about that. And we have what we call net metering in this. And we have what we call net metering in this state. So, I will have a meter that goes forward to use and backwards as I produce.
I'm going to hand out some notebooks. While we do that, let me add a couple of clarifications. Commissioner Green, I think you were asking about the system and why so large. Duke Energy is required by law to buy a certain percentage of its power from renewable energy sources. And so, Duke has no, it has no, it can't do otherwise. It has to buy from sources like solar. And then, we now have a statute in North Carolina that was adopted in 2017 that sets up this exact process. So, all the solar farms that have been in queue, so to speak, have all been done under an old system. We're now at the vanguard of a new system that was enacted by the General Assembly in 2017. So, it's, we have to get local approval first, and then go through an RFP with Duke Energy. We have just...
Did you hand it out?
We have just handed out a notebook. I'd like to walk you through it very quickly. From our standpoint, going through our evidence and our presentations should not take very long. But I've put several things in here that I introduced into the hearing. The first thing is a tab that says the law on quasi-judicial proceedings. You have an attorney who knows this, so I don't have to go into any depth on what is competent material and substantial evidence. But I can summarize the whole thing by saying that we are governed in North Carolina by laws that determine how evidence comes in and when evidence cannot come in. And I am going to be making some objections throughout. If you turn to the next tab, I have...
Let me try my mic. Hello. 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 Can you try to turn my mic? There we go. I think I know what it... Remember back in the old days of Nextel, when a phone call was about to come through, you'd hear distortion on microphones? I had my phone laying up here next to the microphone. I think it was my phone creating a disturbance, so I'm sorry about that. Sorry, Tom.
Thank you. That's quite all right.
Yeah.
I had just asked you to turn to the tab on objections. I have placed several items here that I will be objecting about if things occur such as unsworn testimony. Somebody wants to come in and start handing up something off the Internet from a source that's not reputable, or the person who drafted it is not here for me to cross-examine them. This is basic fairness of all hearings that is done in a court of law. I will try to do this, and I assure your chairman as, it will be done with great civility and respect for everybody, and I will keep it to a minimum as best that I can. Next, we do have a tab on what the special-use permit standards are, and it's right behind the, I'm sorry, the tab. It says, in my notebook, it has required findings behind that. I'm not sure that was supposed to be. But you do have in that, in boldface, "Those are the questions that you have to ask, and we have an obligation to present competent material and substantial evidence on that." On the next tab, "Evaluation Criteria," we submit that into evidence. It's also in your packet. The tab after that is simply a statement from Thomas Cleveland, and behind that, you have an affidavit by Corey Howell. Mr. Howell is here to be cross-examined on that, as is Mr. Cleveland. These are not statements by people who were not here to be cross-examined. We do have a market impact study. The author of that study is here, Mr. Richard Kirkland. This has been in the application. Citizens have seen this, but Mr. Kirkland is here and can be cross-examined. Finally, we have a report from Mr. Reynolds Neely, who takes several sections from your land use plan to show you why this facility is actually consistent with the principles that have been adopted by this county for that facility. And he addresses the issue of harmony from a professional standpoint. What does a professional planner call harmony? And how is that dealt with in planning theory? And then, the last thing here, we do have are the site plans, which are going to be shown by Mr. Corey Howell of Kimley Horn. I know Mr. Stewart has just gone through the site plans, but I'm going to ask Corey Howell to come up. Mr. Howell is an engineer. He's with one of the largest civil engineering firms in the state of North Carolina. Corey, if you would come up, we tender him, I want you to give your credentials, but we do tender him as an expert in civil engineering. And if you would pay specific attention to the vegetative buffers.
Good evening. My name is Corey Howell. I'm a licensed professional engineer here in the state of North Carolina. I have a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Rose-Hulman Institute of Technology. I work for Kimley Horn and Associates. My office address is 421 Fayetteville Street, Suite 600 in Raleigh. And just wanted to touch on a few things, as Mr. Terrell requested, related to the buffers. As was mentioned, highlighted by staff and in other discussions earlier, we have not only met, but we've also exceeded the setbacks for the site around the perimeter of the project. In addition to that, from a buffering standpoint, we have met and exceeded the required landscape buffers by not only committing to install in areas where there is not existing vegetation, a continuous evergreen hedge of material planted at 5 feet on center. And then, as well, we've enhanced that by adding, what we're proposing to add, crepe myrtle trees every 50-foot on center beyond that, as is detailed in the notes on our plan, which we believe will meet and exceed the buffering requirements and the, for the county. I'm happy to answer any other questions in regards to the site plan or the landscape buffers.
Do you have photos of the buffer to show them?
I do. I do.
Sure. Also, the cover of your notebook for your information is a rendering of what the buffer,
So, the, of the available species as defined in the code, for the purposes of this rendering, we've identified 2 species that we would propose for the project. You see a continuous evergreen hedge that is a little bit lower there. That is wax myrtle we're proposing to use. And then, the taller trees with the white blooms, those are Naches crepe myrtles that we propose. And so, this, what you see before you, it's in your booklet, I believe, and it's also here on the screen. This is what we anticipate, based on typical growth requirements and growth expectations of these species at 4 to 5 years after installation. And we also have a rendering that was prepared, showing the buffer at its mature standpoint approximately 10 years after installation.
So, how tall would, excuse me, how tall would the wax myrtles be at maturity?
Yeah, maturity, they can get probably in the 10 to 15-foot range at maturity.
What about, how long of a lifespan are we looking at for these species?
So, that's a great question. That really depends on environmental conditions and depends on, you know, what happens. But ultimately, the project, this being a condition of the project, they are required to maintain a buffer that meets these, this performance criteria throughout the life of the project. So, in the event, I mean, we would hope that the buffer should live, you know, once it's planted forever. You know, things happen, species die. If any of that happens, it's required that we would replace anything that is, that's a damager that dies.
Okay. And the width of the buffer, then?
Yeah, so, the proposed buffer, the planted buffer is 20 feet per code requirement. And within that 20 feet, this is a, it's 2 things. It's a continuous evergreen hedge of what we're proposing as the wax myrtles. There are certainly some other species that would meet that criteria, based on the Rowan County Code. And to just take it a step further and provide some additional buffering, we're proposing to add the crepe myrtles, which is above and beyond the code minimum requirements, just to help enhance the buffer, as was stated.
Okay. I have another question. You're planting basically 2 similar species. And this will be up against wooded areas, or just out in the open, or...
So, this will be in areas that there is no existing vegetation. So, as was shown on the site plan, and I can go back to that, just to show you all of the site plan. The buffer is proposed in areas where there's not existing vegetation today. So, wherever we can maintain the existing vegetation, wherever that meets the buffering requirements today, we would, we want to keep that, to maintain that existing look. And so, that, you know, in a lot of cases around the perimeter of the site, there's existing vegetation that we'll maintain as it is today. In areas where, that are cleared now, open fields, we're proposing that buffer that I showed you, the rendering of, to provide screening from the project.
Doesn't that open up the possibility of blight coming in and taking the whole thing out at one time?
You know, I don't think that that would happen here. You know, there's, you know, and again, if something would happen to the species that's planted, ultimately, the applicant is required to maintain that buffer in place.
And how many running feet or miles of buffer like this, are you planning to plant, then?
That is a great question. I would approximate, probably in the 2,000 to 3,000 linear feet of buffer around. You know, it's only in the areas that are the darker shaded orange around the perimeter. A lot of the areas have existing vegetation that will be maintained.
Thank you.
Is this project going to be fenced?
Yes, that's a great question. So, there will be fence, any areas where there is actually array located, it'll be fenced with a 6-foot chain-link fence around that portion of the array. The entire property won't be fenced, but it will be wherever the actual array is placed. That area will be fenced, each of the array areas.
Okay. I imagine with 200 or 300 acres or of solar fencing, that the topography's not going to be level at all areas. And that 15 feet, as the topography flows up and down in the back, is, 15 feet's not going to cover the view of all of that.
Based, excuse me, based on the analysis that we've done in the areas where we're proposing the buffer that aren't screened, we feel like that should provide coverage from a topographic standpoint.
Do you have these buffers? We have 57 different households that you said that you were going to back up to with this thing. Are these buffers in approximately every area that you have a home close by?
They are in every area where there is not existing vegetation today that we feel meets the requirement, the performance standards of the buffer. Wherever the existing vegetation does not meet those standards, and where we've shown on the plan, that's where we're proposing to install the buffer.
So, you're not, like, on the, what I would call the open roads where there's not housing along the road? You're not planning on taking down the mature trees and replanting with this?
Correct. No, we would prefer to leave the existing vegetation in place, because that provides, you know, a significant buffer in place, and propose to leave that, as shown on here.
All right. Thank you very much.
I had a couple of thoughts. Are these panels considered to be impervious?
Yes, they are considered to be impervious by North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality.
As I said, I said, are they impervious, not are they pervious?
Oh, sorry. They are not, they are not impervious.
They are pervious.
They are considered pervious.
Which means?
Which means they do not require any additional treatment for stormwater standpoint. They are elevated off the ground, and so, any stormwater from the site will perk into the soil.
And will you have to go through permitting with NCDEQ because of wetlands and streams on site?
That's correct.
And will this project have to meet 100...
Mr. Terrell, could you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. Will this project have to meet 100% of all state and federal laws related to the water on this property?
That is correct.
I thought you just told us that this land wouldn't perk.
My question relates to wetlands and streams, and there are some on this site.
How many acres of trees will you have to tear down?
I can answer that. This is Lathan Grimes again. So, through the middle of this site, there is a flood plain and a number of wetlands. So, we don't disturb trees. We have a required buffer off of that. So, all the trees in the flood plain and all the wetlands throughout will remain. And some of it has been timbered before, but I would say approximately 200 acres is about existing trees that will be removed. The parcel to the north of Cheryl's Ford Road was timbered recently, but that should be about what it is, when you count in the 50-foot, 30 to 50-foot of existing trees that we're going to leave. And to one of the commissioners, that is the point. If there's existing trees there, we're going to leave them, because there's not a better buffer than that. And in cases with any landowner, if a landowner has had a preference one way or the other, that's what we went with.
Are these panels, the glare-proof panels?
I want to defer to one of the later speakers to speak to glare.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Another expert.
All right. Anything else for Corey, for Mr. Howell? If not, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Tom, next.
Thank you. I'm going to call Thomas Cleveland up. I'm going to ask him to give you his resume, but he is, he has been called by others, "The man who invented solar in North Carolina." There's some exaggeration. But he was working with the North Carolina State Solar Energy Center before utility-scale solar became prevalent in this state. And he has consulted with probably more cities, towns, counties than you can ever count about this type of facility. But he now consults all over the southeast. And I'm going to ask Mr. Cleveland to step forward and give you his resume. We will tender him as an expert in engineering and the science of solar.
My name is Thomas Cleveland. I go by Tommy Cleveland. I live in Raleigh. And I'll tell you a little bit about my background. I've got a BS and master's in mechanical engineering from NC State, where I focused on solar energy in my master's. And I spent the next 12 years working at NC State at what was originally called the Solar Center, has recently changed her name to the North Carolina Clean Energy Technology Center. And for about the second half of that time, I was the lead solar engineer there. So, I dealt with lots of questions that came into the university. That was as solar development was starting across North Carolina. And communities, local jurisdictions, citizens had a lot of questions about what were the impacts of, or potential impacts... were the impacts of, or potential impacts of this new technology going in these solar facilities. And all of those questions found their way to me. And I quickly developed expertise by going out and reading the literature that was available. I was already very familiar with the technology, had been teaching in two different departments at NC State, solar energy courses. So for the last six years or so, I've spent a lot of time looking at the specific question of what are the potential health or safety impacts of solar. Around the beginning of that time, I led for our organization the development of a North Carolina-wide, stakeholder-led process to develop a template solar ordinance for North Carolina. That's been used in some form or used as a basis for us, solar ordinance around the southeast. So I've got a strong background in, in solar ordinance, even though my academic background's not in planning. And then toward my, end of my time at NC State, was the lead author of a paper, NC State Public Education Paper on Health and Safety Impacts of Photovoltaics. That was a peer-reviewed paper that came out about two years ago. And then for the past two years, I have been working at a nonprofit energy consulting firm, and we are the sole commissioning engineer for Duke Energy. And we go out and inspect all private solar farms that are connecting to distribution lines in North and South Carolina for Duke Energy. And we get, I'm one of three engineers that gives the final go-ahead before Duke will approve the site to be connected to the utility grid.
Would you just run through all the points that you had about solar?
All right. Yeah, I'll say more. I thought there was going to be a more formal tendering me process. So in that paper that I, I mentioned, the conclusion there was, you know, after my background knowledge and working with others at the center and across the university and reading through many academic papers, that there was essentially zero risk of a negative health or safety impact from photovoltaic systems being installed as the, the technology is being installed at that time and today in, in North Carolina. In fact, by that solar being produced and putting electricity on the grid, it means there's natural gas and coal that are not being burned because the solar is providing electricity instead, which has positive benefits on public health by reduced emissions, immediately air emissions, but also water emissions. The technology, photovoltaic technology is not new. It's been around over 50 years, but there's been the first PV panels, essentially the same technology as today, that have been in the field for over 40 years. And those have been studied for, for 40 years. They were the first of a technology going out in the field. So it's well-understood what happens to them over time. Universities and many governmental agencies in the US and around the world have, have been asking this question of what are the health or safety impacts. And the conclusion has been that there are no negative health or safety impacts. But I'll go into a little more details on some of the potential impacts and give a little more evidence, evidence there. Often, one of the biggest concerns is some kind of pollutants directly from the, the process. When the systems are producing, they're emissions-free. They're not releasing anything in the atmosphere or, or the water or any other type of emission that would have any impact on public health or safety. There's a general concern about the toxicity in the panels and, or other equipment and what happens at the end of the life, or what happens in some catastrophe if a tornado comes through and tears up the system and it's left to sit on the ground in just a really worst-case scenario. And there, there's no public health or safety concern there. There's two different types of panels or technology that's in the industry today, a silicon-based panel and cadmium-telluride-based panel. The concern with silicon is that there's a very tiny amount of, of lead in the solder on the tiny wires in between the, the cells. All the rest of the panel are very benign, common materials. It's almost entirely glass and aluminum. And then you've got some plastics, some, some tin, some silver, some copper, all materials that are non-toxic. At the end of the life, the panels are recyclable, which is the expected, what would happen in, in 25 or 35 years when the panels reach the end of their life. They have a 25-year power production warranty on those panels. So it's backed by the company, that and often a third-party insurance behind that, that the panels will still produce at least 85% of their original production after 25 years. So even when we talk about end of life of that panel, it's still not worthless. It's still producing 85% of what it did, you know, the day it was put in. So it may go to some secondary market, or it could be put in a landfill. As I was mentioning, there's non, it's a non-toxic panel. There are standardized EPA tests in federal legislation to determine if some product is hazardous waste or not. And the solar panels, both silicon and cadmium-telluride pass that, that federal test to be considered non-hazardous waste, which just means they're allowed to go in a regular landfill. But the expectation is they will be recycled because they are so recyclable, and there's value in those, those products. Today, when they are recycled, it's what we would call light recycling. There's a large portion of the glass is recycled and the aluminum's recycled, but the other solar-specific elements are not commonly recycled today. That's already starting to change in Europe. Europe put in larger numbers of panels before the US. Their regulations now require solar panels to be recycled. And just last year, they built their first dedicated recycling plant for solar panels that can, what they refer to as deeply recycle a solar module, and recycle about 90, 95 to 99% of the solar module. Take it all apart and, and pull it out into elements that can then go into making a new solar module.
Can North Carolina get that going too?
Yeah, there's, North Carolina is one of the leaders because we have a lot of solar installed. And there's a national organization working with solar industry and recycling industry working on that effort. There's also a new North Carolina law around decommissioning that rules are being written. I just attended the first stakeholder meeting last week. Rules are being written now to determine what North Carolina is going to require in terms of decommissioning.
When you were in school, what was the average-sized solar farm that you test, did these tests on?
Yeah, in, in school, it was a handful of modules on a, on a roof. At least in, in North Carolina, that's what was commonly being installed. In Europe and California, there were, you know, a tenth of a, a tenth of a megawatt was a solar farm at that time.
And your history with solar farms, how many of them have been sold before they were decommissioned?
Yeah, I don't have exact numbers on that, but it's common for a solar farm, it's common for them to be sold. Well, it's 50. Yeah, I would, if I had to guess, I would say on the order of 50%. I don't know the number exactly, but some are sold, some are not. And, yeah, others here can speak more specifically about these companies and their plans for the future of this project. Cadmium-telluride is the other type of solar panel technology. It, it also passes the same EPA test I mentioned, so it is non-hazardous waste. It could go into a landfill, but there's only one manufacturer of that kind of panel, which is a US company for solar. And they have a contract with every site that they sell solar panels to, to take back those panels at the end of the life. And they own their own recycling centers. Those recycling centers are able to recycle back out that cadmium and telluride, so that they have a, have their own source of those elements for their, their panels going forward. Cadmium is a toxic heavy metal, but there's no free cadmium in these modules. No cadmium by itself. It's all bound up with another element to make cadmium-telluride, which is only about 1/100th the toxicity of cadmium. A little bit like chlorine gas, chlorine by itself is very toxic, but when you combine it with sodium, you get table salt. So combined, it's a, a non-toxic, very stable element. Similarly, cadmium-telluride is very stable. It doesn't off gas, it doesn't dissolve in, in water, and it's sealed behind two pieces of glass with, with plastics sealing any moisture away from it. Because of that cadmium fear, it's been closely studied since the 80s. And those studies have done everything from shooting it with steel balls to crushing it and many different types of, of tests where they've done. And the scientific consensus is, it's not a public safety hazard, that it, it doesn't leach the cadmium. Even in the case of a fire, the cadmium binds with the glass, and just a minute fraction is emitted to the, to the air. So there's, there's no toxicity risk to health or safety during the life of the project or at the end of the life, even in some worst case of broken modules being left just on the ground. And the expectation is the modules would all be sold on a secondary market because they still are good, or they would be recycled.
You've, you've mentioned that twice. Is that like the overseas, is that secondary market? What's the secondary market?
Yeah, the secondary market would be probably a third-world country or somebody here wanting to buy used panels. If a, a used panel is a third of the cost of a new panel, but doesn't produce as much power, may have a shorter life. Yeah, it could be here, or it could be third-world countries looking for solar, cheaper solar. Electromagnetic fields, or EMF for short, are sometimes referred to as radiation, is another concern that is raised about solar. But it's not a situation that should be concerning. The electricity produced by these panels are exactly the same as any other electricity on the grid. So there's no increased EMF from the, the grid because this solar project is there. Going to the other end of the project, down to the individual panels, those are all DC components, at low voltage and low current, and they produce essentially no EMF. But throughout the site, you have inverters and transformers that do produce some EMF at a couple of different frequencies. But those are located internal to the site, and that EMF only travels so far before it's, you know, it's so weak, you can't, you can't indicate that it's there. There's EMF all over the, the world, even out in the rural areas. There's some tiny amount of background EMF. So if you're standing outside of this project at one of these fences, whether this project's built or not, you wouldn't measure or experience any extra EMF because the project's there. Because there's only, the only components that produce any EMF to speak of are, are internal to the site. So those inverter locations that produce some EMF, it, it only extends out so far. It's kind of like sound. It's, it's more intense right near the source, and then it diminishes fairly quickly the farther you go.
Mr. Cleveland, what, I might ignorance again, but what is EMF?
Yeah, electromagnetic fields.
Sorry.
So it's, it can be a lot of different things. It's, it's light or X-rays, or in this case, it's what, it's magnetic fields and electric fields that come off of the alternating current in, in electricity wires.
How does this change? This is so large that they're going to have to build it, their own transformer inside there. And at that point in time, they're, they're going to have extra-large wires going off because of this capacity. So are we talking about two different animals when you're talking about the low amount of EMF that is produced at the site? But then when it gets pulled together from this 300 acres or whatever that we're going to end up with of solar panels, you've got something hot going on that has to go on to the high transmission wires. So are we talking about the same thing at, at this?
We, we, we are. And you're exactly right in pointing out that there's different components of the, of the site. The high voltage part is at the, between the substation and those transmission wires. So you've got a little short section of wire between this new substation and those existing transmission wires. And there'll be solar electricity flowing through those short wires. That's exactly the same voltage and essentially the same current as in the overhead wires. So you've got no new EMF being generated in, in that section on the high voltage side of the, that substation. On the lower voltage side of the substation, it's kind of a collection system that's collecting the solar electricity from smaller transformers spread all around the site. And you've got a combination of underground and overhead wires that are bringing that to the, to the substation. And those wires are very much like distribution wires, just wooden power poles and the lines on those poles. And they are primarily inside of this footprint. I haven't, I don't know if that design, that level of detailed design is even defined yet. But those wires collecting the, the power from around the site is also nothing that's different than a regular utility distribution line. It's actually a little lower voltage. So there's no point here where it's really large voltage or really high current that might produce some kind of extra EMF. It's all very typical utility types of equipment, lines and voltages and currents. If that's addressing the question.
Will that be tested?
I'm not sure what there is to test. It'll be inspected. Duke will come out and, and do the sort of inspection I described as my, my day job, and they'll come out and say.
Well, you're telling me there's no additional EMFs.
Right.
How do you know that?
Because of the nature of what EMF is and how it's generated. It's generated by-
It doesn't have to be tested?
No. They could, they, they know the equipment that's there, the size of the wire, the size of the current. And this is all within regular bounds of any, any utility equipment or even residential or, or commercial sites would have this kind of voltage lines running to them. This medium, medium voltage is what would be inside of the site.
Could you put the slide up where the substation is located on the property, please? Okay. So what, in distance, what is the nearest resident, residence to the substation itself?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, my name is Corey Howell with Kimley Horner Associates. Bear with me for just a second here. I will. The distance to the closest residence from where the substation is proposed is approximately 200 feet.
And is there, is there any ordinance or, or safety rule that says that residences have to be x far away from high trans, high voltage transmission lines?
Not that I'm aware of in anywhere in North Carolina. I've got a couple more points.
Sorry.
And there was a question about glare earlier. These, it's industry standard to have an anti-glare, anti-reflective coating on the front surface of the, the panels, which is an anti-glare coating. The, there's so much energy in the sunlight that hits the panels. And the solar panels can only produce electricity from the sunlight that they absorb. And they have to, if they're absorbing it, they can't reflect it. So they reflect, reflect very little sunlight. One risk that does exist is the, the risk of fire. There's the possibility of a, a short or some kind of electrical fault that, that could produce a fire. But the equipment has very little flammable material. The panels are mostly glass and aluminum and silicon, none of which is flammable. But there's little thin plastic layers. There's a plastic-based insulation on wiring, and those are the components that are, are flammable. So if a, a fire starts, there's automatic protections such as circuit breakers to stop that flow of current. And then that flammable materials will burn thems, burn themselves out. So there's very limited risk of any, any fire here. It'd be more significant fire risk if there was a building built here, a wooden building with lots of combustible materials, with electricity ran all around inside of those wooden walls, would have much more fire risk than, than this project. At least in terms of fire risk to anybody outside of the project. Sound is a, a concern. There are a few components that make some amount of sound, primarily the inverters. They produce electrical whine or hum in the way they operate. And then they also have a cooling fan. The cooling fan being the most, the loudest part. So it's something like an older residential air conditioning unit. And there's- And there's a number of inverters spread around this site, and they are commonly fairly central to a group of panels. The cheapest way to locate that is to put the inverter in the middle of a group of panels that power the inverter, and all your wires are shortest that way versus having it way on the edge and taking longer wires. So just the natural way these are designed, the inverters tend to be somewhat internal to the array, not right along the perimeter. And I'm saying that because if you were right beside an inverter, you definitely would hear it in the daytime. If it's 100 feet or 200 feet away behind several rows of panels, you won't hear it. And at nighttime, the inverters make no sound at all. They fully shut down and don't make any sound. The transformers still have a much softer hum at night. They're very similar to the large green transformers you would see outside of a school or behind a commercial complex. And you never hear those. You've got to almost put your ear to them in most environments to be able to hear them And then the most significant risk would be some kind of electric shock to the folks building the system or maintaining it off in the future. And there's lots of regulations to protect those folks. This all has to be built to National Electrical Code and inspected to National Electrical Code. All the equipment has to be UL-listed and therefore tested to be safe. So that's really the main risk, and it's no riskier than any other commercial facility or electrical in any commercial or industrial building. So it would have no impact to neighbors or anybody passing by in terms of safety risk. And it's based on these facts, it's my professional opinion, this site will not have a material or not materially endangered, public health or safety. And I'm glad to take any additional questions.
Do you, I don't know, this may not be a question for you, but you said the normal life cycle for these projects is 25 to 35 years?
Well, for the panels themselves, yes, somebody else could better speak about the whole entity and the whole facility and maybe contracts around the land or power purchase agreements. But yes, the panels themselves have a 25-year warranty, and a lot of the recent accelerated aging testing is showing they probably have more like a 35-year life before they reach 85% degradation, or degrade to 85% of initial.
So I guess my question was, if these, and I don't know how long these large-scale solar farms have been going on around our country, is there any examples of anywhere where some of these farms have went through their life cycle, and they've decommissioned, and they've repurposed the land into something different?
Not that I'm aware of, of what I would call a modern kind of solar facility. Some of the earliest ones built in the 80s, at least I'm aware of one in California that's been decommissioned. But it was, the construction was a bit different. It was in a desert, and it used more concrete at that time. In these projects, the only concrete plant is at the inverter pads and the substation. So I'm not aware of one that's built with modern construction techniques that's been decommissioned.
I have just a very few follow-up. For clarification, you did say that in the silicon modules, that they do have a small amount of lead. Would that small amount of lead pose any material danger?
No, it would not.
Would it be more or less lead than is in an average shotgun shell?
It would be quite a bit less. And then I didn't make, did not make this clearly maybe, that the lead in the solar modules are physically protected with that tempered glass front, and then environmentally protected, meaning they're encapsulated from any moisture with layers of plastic, essentially industrial adhesives, that are able to keep moisture out of the panels for that entire life of the panel. So therefore, no moisture can get to the lead.
Okay. You were asked how many of these facilities historically have been sold. You said 50%. If a facility is sold, is it sold subject to all of the local and state permit requirements that were imposed at the beginning?
Yes, and in any other contractual requirements as well.
You also mentioned fire and discussed that very briefly. You said there aren't many flammable materials in a solar farm. Does the average home have a lot of flammable materials?
Yes.
Is it more dangerous that a home would burn than a solar farm?
Yes, significantly so.
Okay, thank you. And I think this is my final question. You were asked about decommissioning. Would you explain how simply these are constructed and how easy it is just to pull up the post and pop out the panels to decommission?
Yep, gladly. You could think of the project probably in four different components. There's the substation, which is like any other small utility substation. There's buried conductors. Some projects bury the conductors in PVC conduit, some just directly bury the insulated wires. And then there's some concrete pads that have a smaller transformer, smaller than the substation transformer, and inverters on it. And then there is racks of solar panels. So these are galvanized steel posts that are pile-driven into the grounds, five-plus feet into the ground. And then there's steel or aluminum racking that's bolted onto those panels, those posts, and then panels are bolted to that racking. So it's a simple construction, and decommissioning is even simpler. You just start unboltin' parts, pull off modules, take apart the racking, pull the post out of the ground. There's existing equipment now that pulls posts out to test how strongly they're inserted, which is required test when you're building a site, and that equipment can pull the post right out of the ground.
How long would it take to remove this equipment, approximately?
They build a site in six months. It'd be a lot faster than that, weeks.
Okay, thank you.
How quick would it be if a hurricane came through there?
A hurricane would be unlikely to damage much of anything. A tornado could damage...
What is the wind capacity? I'm sure that there's a test.
They are, they're engineered to whatever the local wind speed is here, which is designed around, you know, wind speed that may achieve here with a hurricane. I don't know what that, something like 100 miles? I mean, it's 100 miles an hour, I believe is about the right number. Somebody from the audience locally may know that number as 100. So they're engineered to withstand at least 100 miles an hour without damage. A lot of these products are able to be rated up to 150 miles an hour and go in closer to coastal areas. So I don't know the specifics of what's going to be installed, but it's very possible they're rated to a wind speed much higher than required.
That's all. Ashad, if, thank you, Don. We call Mr. Richard Kirkland as our next witness. And if you would give your background.
Good evening. Again, my name's Rich Kirkland. I'm with Kirkland Appraisals out of Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm a state-certified general appraiser, been appraising in North Carolina for over 20 years now. Also an MAI, which is a national designation through the Appraisal Institute, which you get through additional coursework, peer review, and advanced studies. I regularly appraise agricultural properties, agricultural businesses. I appraise subdivision developments and vacant land. Work with local government. I work with banks, developers. I work with a lot of environmental groups as well. I've been asked in this case to look at what's called an impact analysis. Impact analysis is simply a way of addressing whether or not this project as proposed would have any impact on adjoining property values.
Before you go too far into what you did on your credentials, how many states have you studied, in how many states have you studied solar farms from an appraisal or market impact study?
I've worked in about 18 states now. I've worked in North Carolina, most of everything in the southeast, North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, and such like that.
And how many different facilities have you studied?
So far, somewhere just a little bit north of 600 solar farms that I've looked at so far.
Are all of the standards that you have used consistent with the North Carolina Appraisal Board?
They are.
Are they consistent with what is taught by the Appraisal Institute?
They are.
Are they consistent with what is called USPAP?
Yes.
Would you tell them what USPAP is?
Sure. USPAP is the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice. All appraisal work that I do, or any appraiser does, will be regulated through USPAP and have to comply with that to greater or larger extent. The only way you can escape USPAP is through a jurisdictional exception, which would be dictated and not appropriate to that. USPAP, it's...
USPAP, it's an acronym?
Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice.
And with that background, we tender Mr. Kirkland as an expert in the appraisal of solar facilities.
And just to expand on that a little bit, specific to some of the questions that have been brought up so far about this project. Out of the over 600 solar farms I've looked at and researched uses around and looked for sales, I've looked at over 50 that are over 50 megawatts. So it's very common that they're growing in size these days. I've been looking at this question for eight years now, and I've presented at over 400 hearings of this character across the state and several other states as well. Again, the vast majority of those hearings have led to findings that the solar farms are harmonious use and having no impact on adjoining property values. And there's at least three cases that I'm aware that the North Carolina appellate court or appeals court has found that specifically the analysis that I'm using is the correct methodology and does show significant material evidence of no impact on value. So let's see. Guess the first thing I should talk about is methodology. Match pair analysis, I know I've explained this to this board before, but matched pair or paired sales analysis, this is really what the Appraisal Institute puts forward as one of the best ways of identifying whether there is an impact on property value. And in the report that was included up there, you can see I cite Dr. Randall Bell's work on real estate damages. It outlines exactly how that methodology is put forward and why that is the right methodology to use. I've done that type of analysis on this project. I've looked at a number of solar farms across the state. And if you look on pages, I guess in the report, if you're following along, starting on page six on up to about page 34, I outline a number of solar farms that I looked at in the state. Specifically, I'll go ahead and outline Goldsboro. Goldsboro is the first one that I looked at in the analysis. It's the AM Best Solar Farm Project. List that one, I know I've talked to you about that one before too, but it's just really, it's a textbook example of a matched pair analysis. There are home sales that were happening in the subdivision before the solar farm was announced that got later built next to it. The homes and the subdivision were ongoing after the project was announced, and also after the project was finished. You can look at the sales prices of the homes in that subdivision. They actually went up after the solar farm was built. They started building larger homes in that facility as part of a shift in the market. Once the solar farm was built, the developer, he put out his marketing, the identical floor plans, the plans for the homes that were built that backed up to the solar farm, sold for the same price as the homes that were down the street not backing up to the solar farm. Had no impact. You can look at the sales data presented in there with no adjustments. You can see that they're sold for essentially the same price, same price per square foot for the same floor plans. I talked with the developer about how quickly they sold those homes. They said that, again, they sold out that community in the same time period they were really projecting initially, so the solar farm had no impact on how quickly they sold the homes as well. There's also been resales. Builder sold a home to a homeowner, and about two and a half, three years later, they sold it again to another homeowner. And it showed appreciation of about 2.5% per year over the period that those people held that home. So that was very typical for that area at that time. So the adjacency to the solar farm project had no impact on the appreciation of the homes next to the solar farm as well. So really, looking at the initial sales price, the timing of marketing, as well as appreciation, those three different ways of looking at impact on value, this one project shows no impact on any of those functions. And again, I've got 13 different solar farms where I've pulled multiple matched pairs in this analysis. I won't walk through all of them unless you ask me to. But I would go ahead and point out that of those, I include, number six would be the Summit, which is a project that's in Currituck, North Carolina. It's an 80-megawatt facility, and it's showing homes adjoining that showing no impact on property value. I would also point out that there is McBride Solar, which is in Midland, North Carolina. That is a 75-megawatt facility that shows home sales next to that showing no impact on value. And furthermore, on that one, I know that I spoke with a broker who was marketing some lots that joined that facility, and they're actually advertising the adjacent solar farm as an asset, that there would be no future development next door, and they see that as an enhancement to that property, and they're advertising that as such. And also, I would, Canita, it looks like cone toe, but it's pronounced Canita. That project is an 80-megawatt facility that I've looked at and found matched pairs. So again, in appraisal terms, this would be called bracketing. I've looked at solar farm projects that are smaller than this facility, but I've also looked at solar farm projects that are bigger, and they are consistently showing no impact on property value. And again, I'd be happy to go back and walk through any of those if you need that. Additional things I've looked at, I've looked at the distance to adjoining homes. I've got, in the matched pairs that I've looked at, I've found homes as close as 125 feet from the closest panel to the closest point on an adjoining home. All the homes in this case have been stipulated are going to be further than that distance. Again, and that's not a measure to the property line. I measure on all of my, everywhere I've looked at, I've always measured from the closest panel to the closest home because that more accurately captures distance. Because, as you can see from the breakdown that your planning staff put forward, some homes were within 10 feet of the property line, and some are 400 feet from the property line. And so to really capture the idea of how close things are, I prefer to look at the distance from panel to home. So again, no issues there?
Did you say that you did this on your computer, or you did this actually in the field in Rowan County?
No, I used Google Earth for the measurements, but also when all the matched pairs I look at, I know I've not gone out there and run a tape measure to everything, so there is probably a plus or minus, a small adjustment to all those measurements, but they would all be within a reasonable distance of those numbers.
Okay, but were you actually in Rowan County?
Yes, sir, I've been to Rowan County. I'm not sure with the question.
I'm asking if you went to Neal Road, if you went to any of these sites?
Yes, sir, I've been to these sites, yes, sir. Additional questions I heard were brought up was topography. I measured a distance differential on topography across this whole site of about 110 feet. You can see, I guess I'll point you to page 32, but you can see that I've looked at the topo shift across the other solar farms where I've pulled those matched pairs. I've seen topo shifts as much as 150 feet, and they're still showing no impact on those adjoining property values. And again, this 110-foot shift is spread out over a 400-acre tract, so it's not like there's a sudden shift in one area. So again, back to bracketing, I've looked at places that have less topo shift and areas that have more topo shift, and that there was no impact. And so again, this falls within the parameter of the comparables that I've looked at. The mix of adjoining uses, again, the mix of adjoining uses around these are very consistent with what I see across the state and really across the country. Really agricultural-residential mixed uses. Most of the adjoining property is agriculture if you look on a per-acre basis, and most of the adjoining uses are residential when you look on a per parcel basis. So again, this is very consistent with everything I've seen with that. Let's see. The other thing I did want to point out is that the population density around this site, I did hear something referenced about that. Also on page 32, you can see the breakdown when I look at where these matched pairs are being pulled. I've also looked at the demographics around that. I looked at a one-mile radius around the project, but also around all the matched pair solar farms I've pulled from. And again, this project has a very similar population density to what I see. It's had 483 people living within a one-mile radius, and the average would be 858 from the matched pairs I pulled, and the median would be 336. So it's really well-bracketed and consistent. Also looked at median income, median housing price, and these are all consistent, again, with these other locations where I've pulled data, which reinforces why it's reasonable and appropriate to look at these other sites and compare to this location. So it is my professional opinion that this is a harmonious location for a solar farm. It's consistent with where solar farms are located across the state as well as across the country. The mix of adjoining uses is similar, the topography is similar, the distance to adjoining homes is similar. This is pretty much where solar farms are being located across the state, even when you look at a 65-megawatt site versus a 5-megawatt site. It's also my professional opinion that it's going to have no impact on adjoining property values. Again, I've looked at multitude of matched pairs. I've got, let's see, from those 13 solar farms, I have 20 home sales that I've looked at to come to that opinion, and eight land sales that I looked at. And in the larger database of matched pairs that I've looked at... And in the larger database of matched pairs that I've looked at, includes other states, but also other areas of North Carolina, I've got over 60 of these that show that, that's showing no impact on property value. And I have as well additional matched pairs next to larger solar facilities in the 80 to 100-megawatt in other states that I've looked at as well, that are also consistently showing that same lack of impact on these property values. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into anything else in greater detail and answer any questions you have.
Commissioner, so first.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm gonna, Mr. Kirkland, I have some questions for you. Tom, first I wanted to ask you, there are several places in here, I know in your original statements to us about quasi-judicial proceedings, that we would not be able to include information from people who were not able to be here and be cross-examined.
That's correct.
All right, so within his report here, he does that several times, so is that okay with you?
The, I'm gonna let your attorney jump in after I say that, if he feels like he needs to. There is a difference between somebody coming into a hearing and saying, "I want you to look at this paper that I found somewhere," versus someone like Mr. Kirkland, who would be perhaps like a doctor, looking, talking about Grey's Anatomy.
Well, I'm not questioning that, and I'll get to it, because I got a lot of questions from my friend, Mr. Kirkland. There are places in here where he says, "And I talked to these homeowners, and they didn't seem to have a problem with it." So is that gonna be admissible?
The, well, let me just ask him a question to make that relevant data, if I may.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kirkland, when?
Let me give you an example. Under the Neil Hawken Solar in Gastonia, I spoke, this is page 16, I spoke with Jennifer Boyvier, I'm trying to use an accent there that I'm not qualified to use. The broker listing the property, and she indicated the solar farm had no impact on all of the sales price. And there's others where they say, "Yeah, we just kinda didn't really care." So I just want to make sure we're playing by the same rules.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Kirkland, you testified earlier that you're following all the standards of the Appraisal Institute, the Appraisal Board and USPAP, is that correct?
It is.
And as part of those standards, do you interview people who live adjacent to a certain use to further clarify or elucidate anything that data might not show?
Yes, that's part of the confirmation process.
And is that type of part of the process that you were taught when you were learning the ropes of being an appraiser?
It is. It is common appraisal practice.
Did you talk with local realtors?
Yes.
About any sales that they had had around here?
Oh, here in Rowan County. I did not speak to any realtors here because I had no sales adjoining your solar farms to look at at this time.
So, Chair, back to the question, Tom, as to the statements attributed to other people, we're not going to accept those.
Okay.
As to the truth of what they assert. If he has a conclusion based on those interviews, that's fine, but as to specific statements attributed to professionals?
Can you conclude?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't accept those as to what they assert.
So I?
Go ahead.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So, Tom, we're good.
If I could just follow up and say, and ask this one question, can you reach the same conclusion as you did without those statements from residential owners?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I got a lot of questions for you. I have one question. You said you've done 600 solar farm studies so far. Have you, in any case of those 600, said that this would damage?
I have never testified to that effect, but I've declined assignments based on that impression.
All right, fair enough. So I want to talk to you about the concept of matched pair. And in your submission on page six in the third paragraph, you say, "A matched pair analysis considers two similar or comparable properties that are being distinguished only by proximity to the use that is being studied to determine whether or not that type of land use, and here a solar farm, has any impact on the abutting or adjoining property value. Within the appraisal profession, matched pair analysis is a standard and widely recognized measure of measuring impact on value." So, really talking about comparables, is before and after those that are abutting and adjoining, and you're comparing them to sales that have happened away from the solar farm?
More or less.
Okay. So then I'll, you were, you were very kind to provide for us a lot of examples of matched pair, and so I want to go through some of those with you and ask you about those. And so let's start with matched pair number one, Best Solar Farm in Goldsboro. When was this, because you didn't indicate when it was, when, when was, when did this occur? When was that solar farm completed?
One second. It was built in late 2013 is what I've got.
So late 2013, and in your write-up, it says this subdivision sold out of the last homes in late 2014. In fact, you commented when you brought this up that they started building larger homes. Now, you're not implying that the larger homes are a result of people wanting to live next to solar farms.
That is not my assertion.
Yeah, I didn't think it was. But, but there's a lot of things that go into play here. We've had an economy that was horrid, and now we've got an economy that's turning around, and even in our community, where we have suffered tremendously economically, we have record numbers of homes being applied for and built, and subdivisions being built that haven't, we haven't had subdivisions permitted here in a long, long time. So, you said in here, "I spoke with a number of owners who had joined the solar farm, and none of them expressed any concern." I think that's one of the concerns I had, is that you, but this issue of them building larger homes, and if they, they finished, they completed the solar farm in 2013 and 2014, it says that they finally sold out. I, you know, I'm, I'm looking at some of the sales here, and we're in September of 2019, and let me read for you the dates that you used. September of 13, September of 13, July of 14, August of 14, December of 13, February of 13, April of 13, December of 12, September, November of 12, October of 13, December 13, October 13, March 14, June 14, June of 2014, April 2014, April 2014, September 2012. So, I'd have to look back and see how many sites were in here, but why is, why are there no new? I mean, is everyone just really happy living there and no one sells? Why are we only getting information from 2013 and 14?
The most recent sale I have in that subdivision is in November 2015. It is possible there's been another one. I go through the, I basically, I've got a growing number of solar farms that I go through every winter. When things get a little slow on the appraisal side, we go back through all of these solar farms, and we click and look to see what's sold around them. So as of the last time we did that, which I believe was somewhere in January of this year, we didn't have other sales in here to look at. So the reason we are looking at 2013 and 2014 sales is because we have sales before the solar farm project that I can compare before that project was an influence to those that were sold right after that influence. So that gives you a really good, strong comparison in that dimension. However, also have, there was a multitude of the exact same floor plan being sold in that same general area, some directly adjoining a solar farm and some not. And so that gave you that ability to isolate that. So that is why that those are, in that time, sort of frozen there.
You know, I could spend some time telling you some subdivisions in our county that have not been popular sales for quite some time, who are now selling pretty well. So I, my uneducated question to you is, can you necessarily say that home prices aren't affected because, look, the home price is held? Or is there supply and demand forces that are also involved in this, that don't have anything to do with the solar farm, that are compensating for the fact that there's a solar farm there and people need to live somewhere anyway, so we're gonna buy it? I'm just asking, I'm asking a simple question of, are we, are we willing to introduce the, well, I'd say possibility that this isn't all solar farm-driven, it could be economically driven as well?
But that would actually, again, supply-demand issues, all of these are subject to the exact same supply and demand issues, and so therefore that would be immaterial to any impact between one and the other. But now, when you start talking about more recent sales, there's plenty of other examples of much more recent sales that are listed in, not in the Goldsboro example, but in these other matched pairs.
Yeah, let's move on to that then. The second matched pair is White Cross Solar Farm Chapel Hill. Just a quick question there. It said, was built 2159 White Cross Chapel Hill, Orange County in 2013. How many acres was that? It didn't say, I don't believe. How many acres?
Four, let's see. I don't know that I have that listed in here right this moment. I have that back in my files. Well, actually, wait a minute, I will have that acreage one side. Forty-five acres.
Forty-five acres, all right. So we're 10 times that size. Let's move on to the matched pair for Wagstaff Farm Roxborough. That appears to be, that was done in 2013. The comps we have are from 2013, and that was 30 acres. No questions there, just making an observation. The next one, matched pair Pine Valley Solar Farm, West End, North Carolina. This one's interesting. I feel a little slighted because in the paragraph, it says, "This solar farm will adjoin a mix of residential and agricultural uses and is proposed to be completed in 2017." It's 2019.
It still has not been built.
Still not completed.
No, sir.
Well, this is still old information.
Well, again, any, any home sales that were happening in that time period would have been done under the color of realizing that that was a possibility.
Well, it's proposed to be completed in 2017, so I'm just pointing out that at least this sheet was probably prepared prior to 2017. So if you'd like to provide for us an updated?
Well, I can tell you, we, again, we've checked, it has not been built at this time, and it was proposed to be built in 2017. Exactly why it's being delayed, I don't know.
Perfect. How many acres was that, do you know?
Eighty-nine acres.
Eighty-nine acres, okay. Let's move on. Neil Hawken Solar in Gastonia, any idea how many acres that was and when? It didn't specify either of those.
Page 32 lists all the acres. It's 35 acres.
Okay, well, thank you. I didn't see that. All right, the next one is Ranachlin Solar, and you can tell me quicker than I can look it up, how many acres is that?
2,034 acres.
So the solar farm is 2,034 acres?
That is the, that's the parent tract.
So how big is the solar farm? This is the big one. This is an 80-megawatt.
It's 80 megawatts, yes.
That's a big one. So 2,000 or so? And you did mention these, these two matched pairs that you provide are significantly further from the adjoining solar panels than the typical 1,060 to 2,020 feet. Next one is White Cross and Chapel Hill. Again, indulge me, and if you could just tell me how many acres that one is? That's a 2.8-megawatt facility.
Thirty-four acres.
And thank you for doing that. It says, "An adjoining home sold after construction as presented below." So, again, just one house that we've, we're kinda hanging our hat on in that one to prove that there's no effect on. And so then the next one is Tracy Solar. Again, how many acres is that? That's a 5-megawatt facility. It was 2016.
Fifty acres.
Fifty, all right, thank you. Let's see, this says, "A local builder acquired parcels nine and 10 following construction as shown below at rates comparable to other tracts in the area. They then built a custom home for an owner and sold that at a price similar to other nearby homes as shown in the matched pair data." So our match, our statistical data on that is based on, it looks like one home. Midland, it says, that's a big one too. That's 74.9-megawatt facility, 627 acres. It says, "I've considered the sale of 4380 Joiner Road, which adjoins the proposed solar farm near the northwest section. This appraised in April of 2017 for a value of $317,000 with no consideration of any impact due to the solar farm. The property sold in November 2018 for $325,000 with the buyer fully aware of the proposed solar farm." The next one is Edgcombe County. That's another big one. That's an 80-megawatt on 910 acres. "I've considered a manufacturing home adjoining the project that sold after the project was identified as parcel 14 along Lee Road. This home was 1,515 feet from the closest solar panel. It was located on a half-acre, was built in 2005, and has a gross living area of 1,632 square feet." So there's one comp, I call it a comp, I know that's probably not the right word, but in this case, on a, on an 80-megawatt facility of 910 acres, the only comparable that we received was a mobile home that was sold in March of 2016. Moving on to Cleveland, North Carolina, it's a 4-megawatt plant on a tract of 24 acres. You're right, I've considered a custom home on a nearby property adjoining this solar farm. This home is located on 10 acres, so our matched pair is one home. The next one is Courthouse Solar in Gaston County. This one was permitted in 2016, but has not yet been constructed due to delays. So I don't, I don't, I'm just not a smart guy. You've got two really not smart guys up here. I don't know why this is even included if there's not a solar farm there. Now, I realize they're going through the?
Well, again, there, but it was approved for a solar farm, and anyone buying that would be made aware. And again, it's not the same as an existing one, but it is, it is something for consideration.
Just given my, given my observation. The next one is Mariposa Solar in Gaston County, 35 acres. So we have one that adjoins, and then we have four that are not. And a lot of these are residential, and we show them as three-bedroom, one-bath, four-bedroom, two-bath, three-bedroom, two-bath. You know, it doesn't tell me much about the homes or the market that they're in, but you know, I guess that's, that's just what we get. So I'm, I'm going through those because yours is the most interesting of all this, because we've been through this a lot of times. Rowan County is very welcoming to solar farms. We've done, how many guys? Nine?
Twelve.
Twelve? We've approved 12. Three of them are not, not yet constructed, or I don't know if they just have decided not to do it. So, you know, the, one of the biggest questions we have, because we've been through the safety issues, we've been through traffic issues, we've been through toxicity issues, we've been through, you know, can they burn? We've been through, does it present glare to our airport? We've been through all that, and we're satisfied about that. This is the thing that is interesting to us, and what's interesting to me is that out of 600 solar farm studies, that you've not found one that would affect home sales at all. at all. So we're either, it's got to be one of two things, there's just no solar farm anywhere on the planet that can be built that would affect home sales, or I don't know what the other one would be.
Well, again, solar is a very passive use of the property, and again, for any negative that you want to point to, there's also a positive that you can also point to. Again, there's the idea where there's preserved land next to it. When someone identifies, I've had a hearing last week where someone was saying, you know, "I was planning on building a house here so we could look at the cows across the street, and now I'm not going to have cows across the street." Well, the neighbor has no obligation to keep cows for his viewing pleasure. And whenever you look at that and saying, "Hey, this property over here needs to be kept in a certain state for my benefit," that's different, because I do a lot of conservation work and agricultural easements, and if I have a property that's next to preserved land, I can show you that it is enhanced by the fact that you know that that property is going to be next to preserved forest or preserved farm on into the future, and you can sell that for a premium. But a property that's next to land that is currently used for agriculture doesn't sell for a premium. Brokers may point it out and say, "Hey, look, this is great, you're next to a farm." But there's no guarantee it'll be a farm next week, it could be a subdivision, it could be a lot of different things.
Well, we're not talking about agriculture that we're doing here, or someone keeping cows.
Sure, timber is a form of agriculture, though.
Well, but we're, let's stick to the topic, and the topic today is, we're asking about a 428-acre solar farm, and the question is, is there any solar farm that, that you've seen, or did you just not choose to testify by the folks that were hiring you, that know this could actually have some impact? I mean, I've gone through a lot of these, and except, with the exception of two, most of these are 30, 28, 18, 52 acre. So this, this is a big leap for us. You've got to understand, this is a big leap to go from what we've been presented with in the last 12 cases we've gone through here, from, from what we've seen to this is, it's a leap.
Again, I'd be happy to supplement. As I said, I've got additional data. When you include research from other states, I've got a lot more next to larger facilities and more recent data as well. I'm happy to submit that I've tried to focus on looking at just North Carolina comps to be specific for this, but again...
And Jim Ray, and this is the last thing I'll say, because I'm certainly not trying to badger you. We've, we've got 12 of them here. Guys, do you know when we approved the first one? Fifteen? So, you know, would it be fair for you, if you say, "I'm going to supplement," would it be fair to take a look and see, well, what is happening here in Rowan County with the 12 that we permitted and the nine that we built? I mean, we, we got stuff, most of the stuff is old. It's 13, 14, 15. Now, I know you don't control house sales, so you go with what you've gotten. I'm assuming you go with all the information, so if, if there are homes built in 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, I assume you're giving us the whole picture. I can't assume anything other than that, but either homes aren't selling and hadn't sold since 13 or 14 or 15.
Well, again, like I said, our process, and I go through, I don't go through every solar farm in your county. I go through every solar farm that I've worked on or that I've identified previously here. And when, you know, when there's a specific issue or I see one nearby, we try to grab extra ones.
So these are all your projects?
Well, or projects that are...
These are the ones that you, so you've not...
These are projects in proximity to those as well, because again, I expand, whenever I do one, one project, I try to look out and grab another one that's nearby, but again, I'm expanding the research every time I do one of these.
You raise an interesting question, so I'm not going to go back through, I don't know how, I forget how many you gave, 16, 17 of them, 13? What, what's the number here? Thirteen matched pairs. Of the 13 matched pairs, were you the consultant on all 13?
I do not believe that is, be the case. I know that Canita, I was never involved with. But I was probably, well, I wasn't involved with McBride either. And not Courthouse or Shelby. Mariposa, let me see, I don't think I was, I wasn't involved with Mariposa either, so I was involved with a little over half.
Okay, so seven or eight of the 13, well, half would be.
Something.
Okay. Alright. I see why I'm asking that.
Sure, but again, what I was trying to get to is that, like I said, within the last year, we've gone through and we looked at all of the ones, and when we do that, we are clicking just to see what your GIS tells us is sold in the area. And from that list, we'll go through and we'll look to see if there's any usable sales. You have to understand that in any...
You define a usable sale?
Sure, a usable sale would be one that's, one, not subject to foreclosure, it hasn't gone from one, like, one family member to another family member, because these rural sites, where most of these are located, most of the transfers fall in those, one of those two categories. The other category that you don't really look at would be, well, there's, there's a lot of family LLC activity going on. So we, we have to really look at that. The other thing is that when we look at solar farms where there's other things going on, say there's a large industrial use, a solar farm, and then a neighborhood, we typically don't look at that solar farm, because any activity we look at on that, there's a question of whether, even if we, if we find nothing, no impact, then it's, it's one thing. If we do find an impact, now the question is, was it the industrial use or was it the solar farm? Same thing when we look at one that's like, say, off of a military base or something like that. So there are reasons why you wouldn't. Specifically, we had one recently where there was a home sale next to a large Virginia solar farm I looked at, where you had to cross train tracks to get to the house. So again, I can't use that. So once we identify those, we go and we try to set up the match pairs, we talk to brokers, we try to figure that out, and that's where we go from there. But what my point is, is that any rural site, again, I do a lot of agricultural uses, not just for this, I do poultry farms, I do sweet potato curing barns, things of that nature. Most of the rural properties, if you identify any farm, and you look at all the adjoining uses around it, the odds of there being a sale within the last five years is small. And that's, that's what you're running up against. You say like, "Well, we have these farms that have been approved in 15, and maybe they got built in 16 or 17." Well, they all have really only got a year and a half of really it actually being there to try to capture a sale, and the odds of there being a sale, even if there wasn't a solar farm, is low. And that's why I can look at 600 solar farms and find 50 matched pairs, because these are low, where these are located, there is a low sales activity to begin with, and what sales activity that does exist typically involves family members.
You know, that, that's fair. I, I am just curious on the economics of it, because we are, we have seen in the last few years a real surge in housing prices. So I'm trying to reconcile, how do we attribute your statement that, well, these, this, these were selling for 250, and after the solar farm came, they're selling for 255? Is that because everyone in that community didn't care about the solar farm, or is that because the economy, but, but, because...
But if the appreciation was typical for the area, then again, you would say that that, again, if the whole area is rising, that area is rising the same as everywhere else. So again, the solar farm isn't affecting it. If the solar farm was having an effect, and all homes are rising, but these aren't rising as fast, that would be an indicator.
I understand what you're saying, so they're comparing sales that abut or join a solar farm to a property 10 miles away that is not affected by it, and so you're comparing those...
Well, you probably wouldn't go 10 miles, but sure.
I'm just exaggerating.
Right. So the other thing is that, just addressing the idea of marketability, there's a project that's nearly my house, just north of Benson, North Carolina. It's a Reese Ridge subdivision, brand new subdivision, they just cleared, it was a wooded lot, adjoined at a solar farm. They cleared it recently, they've been, they put in homes. Again, they wiped out all the trees, there is essentially a thin row of pine trees between them and the existing solar farm. Developer did that, they're selling the lots to themselves, so there's no lot sales to look at, but they're now building homes out there. They've got five homes that back up to that solar farm, and those homes are all less than, they're about 150 feet from the nearest point, nearest panel to the nearest home. I'm watching those, but they're putting in custom homes right there. And there, this is in an area where it's largely agricultural, they could have built this, they could have bought land anywhere around there and developed homes. The solar farm project did not limit the developer's opinion of where to develop, you know, and put his money down.
I don't know that that tells me anything, Mr. Kirkland.
Well, once it starts selling, and you can compare that, I'll have match pairs, but what it does tell you is that people who put their money down and are willing to buy and develop land, they, they're willing to buy there, and they, there was no impact.
Well, I'm not disputing that people are willing to buy and build anywhere. As land becomes more valuable, people are going to put, I mean, we're seeing folks, you know, I see housing subdivisions outside of our community, and I'm thinking, "Holy cow, I can't believe, you know, they're building that there, but they're going like hotcakes." But it, it doesn't mean, you know, because of the surroundings, they're going for a lower price than they would if it was in a different location. So the, the issue of them building there and not building there, I don't think is the issue. Folks are building because there's, you know, a shortage of land in some communities.
But again, as I'm saying, there is no shortage of land in that area around Benson. I can bring you the maps to show you, it's mostly fields.
Alright.
I have just one question that just bothers me. I was reading your criteria of what you do when you do an appraisal, and one of the things that, that is not in there, and it, it may not be able to be in there, but as an example, Commissioner Pierce was just telling me before we came in here that he bought a lot, and in that lot, he can see Grandfather Mountain, and he can see two other places, I can't remember right now. And knowing Mr. Pierce, he paid a lot of money for that. But in your appraisals, you don't even mention a view out of the backyard in any of the appraisals. Or how that, it, it just seems intuitive to me that that, there would be a value attached to that somehow.
Again, most people, their backyards back up to another house in somebody else's backyard. What I've, again, talking with, interviewing with folks in those subdivision areas, they're going to have, one of the reasons they do see an enhancement or added value to them is that they are going to have a quiet, dark backyard where otherwise it could be developed as a subdivision.
I'd advise you to, to go into newer states and just see how they are backed up.
Sure. Again, in that specific site, again, but you, you were talking about people's backyards and their view, and I'm just saying, specifically like in the Goldsboro example, I have pictures of their backyards looking towards the panels. And I also have, again, data of people buying homes at McBride Place showing no impact on property value. So again, these are not just my opinions, this is, there's sales data in here that shows that there's no impact, and, you know, that is where my opinion is coming from. This is not necessarily, you know, me just pulling this out of the air, there's factual data that goes behind that, and I'm presenting that evidence to you now. And again, I'm willing to supplement that and show you additional data from other areas. And I'm also willing to go back through and look through Rowan to see if there's been something that's happened since the last time I went through, but again, I have to rely on data for my conclusions.
Mr. Kirkland, I'm not saying you're not doing your job, because it's obvious you're trying real, real hard, but you're not from Rowan County, and the area that you're talking about putting this solar farm has some of the most prestigious neighborhoods in the county. And I do know for a fact, because I've done tons of work in all those developments out there, that you do have views out your backyard, it doesn't look to another house or a deck or a patio.
Sure.
So I'm concerned that if this would go through, just how much screening would have to be put up so that these people don't forfeit their right to have that view they've had all these years? So, so for me, where I've got my angst is, Goldsboro is no way comparable to Rowan County, there's nothing about it. So when you use that as data, to me, you're not, you're doing apples and oranges.
Well, and then look at McBride Place, and look at Shelby and around Cleveland County and those areas where you have similar topography, and Wagstaff off Roxborough. Again, you're looking at areas with a lot more topography. And again, the screening is to help prevent those close-up views. If you have a distant view where you can see something 1,000, 2,000 feet away, that's not the same thing as something that's going to be up close in your backyard.
Well, my only concern is, what if we're wrong?
Again...
What if we build the farm and all of a sudden those house values fall and don't recover? Now, now what?
Well, again, there's no data that shows that that would happen, and again, if that, the work I've done, I've worked with at least 15 other MAIs across the country, and most of those are, I've worked with about five that I can think off the top of my head here in the state of North Carolina, who reviewed this work, have done similar analysis and looked at that. I've worked with groups that have done more statistical analysis, like Cone Resnick out of Illinois, and they've looked at similar projects. We've looked at projects where there are solar farms adjoining $600,000-plus homes. Like, there, there are other areas, again, I've tried to focus on North Carolina and the present, the data I presented here, but when I expand, I get, beyond that, we get some other information added in. But the, as far as it goes, the, the data tells us one direction. And again, as far as the, the implication that I might be hiding some of the data, there isn't any data that I'm hiding, there, I'm showing you the pluses and the minuses in, in here. And if, again, if you find something that you think I'm missing or I should look at, I'm happy to go and look at that. But again, the reason that I haven't testified against a solar farm project is because most of my clients, I tell them that, you know, these are the parameters, if you want me to show up, you'd better set these types of setbacks, and you better set up these types of landscape screening. And then, and so again, if they can't do that, then I don't testify.
Will, will you look at something from, just so we can understand, because we don't know the language of appraising, but on page 17, I assume you've got something we could look at. But this is one of the mega sites, it's the 80-megawatt facility. I think you said this was about 2,000 acres, so this is a beast. But the adjoining residential sales after the solar farm completed, so do you know when this one was, was, when Summit Ranachlin Solar in Maycock, do you know when that was completed, the solar farm?
Mr. Speaker, I'm, or, Mr. Chairman, sorry. I need to excuse myself. I had back surgery 10 years, 10 days ago, and my body is telling me to go home. But I would hope that when the applicant is done with all their professional testimony, that, that we would wait at least 30 days to hear from the other folks. So, good night, everybody.
So...
I don't recall the exact date on that, I can get that number to you, it was around 2016, but I've got pictures of it under construction, but I...
Okay. So when we're looking at the adjoining residential sales after the solar farm completed, on the far right-hand column, it says MFG, does that stand for the, the three matched pairs that you're providing us are manufactured homes?
Yeah, that, what that has on that one is, you see is parcel number 48, it's a manufactured home, I've compared it to two nearby homes that are also manufactured. So those are the, the subject would be the first one, and the next two under that are the comparables that I looked at.
And what does GLA stand for?
Gross Living Area.
Okay, so that's square footage.
Square footage.
So, and this is the stuff that we look at and say, "How are we comparing these?" The first one on 129 Pinto is 4.29 acres. It sold in April 15th tax day, they must have had a little money left over. So on April 15, the sale pri, why would you close on a house on tax day? Just to cheer yourself up, I guess. So it sold for $170,000. That was, that was built in 85, square footage of 1,559 square feet. So the comparable, I'll call it, is that an okay word to use?
That's fine.
Okay. You know what I mean. Sold a couple of weeks before, so April 1 of 16, it's only got 1.39 acres, so it's three less acres. It sold for 175,500 instead of 170. It's got less square footage. And then the last one is on Ranachlin, which is just at an acre, sold before this, well, I don't, we still don't know when this project was completed. All three of these houses, one was April 15th of 16, one April 1 of 16, so we don't know in 16 when this 80-megawatt was completed. The other one is 10, 1 of 14, one acre, not four, four and a third, it sold for 170, it's about the same... four, four and a third. It sold for 170, about the same square, about the same square footage. But we're to glean from this, I mean, you've got to see our confusion on this, where you're comparing three manufactured homes and nothing, not sliding folks that live in manufactured homes, but one of them's 4.3 acres, one's less than an acre. And this just doesn't tell me anything.
Well, and again, we adjust for those differences, and you can see those adjustments right underneath it, where I adjust for the difference in the acreage. And that comes from looking at the different lot sales in that area. The year built is based on depreciation tables. So we've adjusted for all those factors.
$29,000 is a adjustment?
It's a depreciation adjustment for the difference in the age of the building.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. And that's, and that is, again, I know you were pointing this out earlier about, well, you're basing this on one sale here, one sale here, two, you know, when you get your house appraised, it's probably based on four sales. I've looked at, you know, in a market, I've looked at over 600 solar farms. I've found from those over 50 matched pairs of home sales that I'm using to derive this. I've only shown you 20 of those, but I have additional. I've also got eight land sales that are next to it. So again, from an appraisal standpoint, I have a wealth of information that talks about these numbers. When you, if I was appraising a shopping center, you'd be looking at maybe six sales of shopping centers, and you might would look at six rent comps or to that effect. Again, you're, this is how the appraisal process works. And you're, again...
But you have to understand, these people in this audience out here that, that elect us, they want to see four appraisals on the street next to them after this thing's been put in or projected. They don't want Goldsboro. They don't want these others. They're used to appraisals that are done on a local basis with similar houses of the same size and construction, not a modular home compared to a $350,000 house that they may have bought in 1985 that is, and that they plan to stay in the rest of their life, or sell it and retire and do something else. But comparables, we think of comparables as being very local.
Well, and again, you're, this is a misapplication of what the impact analysis is. This is not an appraisal of any one property. This is, when you do an appraisal, and like these adjustments we were just talking about, those adjustments are derived from an impact analysis, from a paired study. When you make that adjustment for the difference in the lot sizes, you have to find out what the difference is. If you're comparing two houses, and one's got a swimming pool and one doesn't, well, you've got to figure out what the impact of a swimming pool is. And you, again, to do that, you have to look outside your comps a lot of times.
Well, I'm the one that has to clean the swimming pool, so it's got a negative value.
I agree.
You need that little pneumatic robot thing. It's good.
Yeah.
But, but again...
Any volunteers?
The, but the impact analysis is how you would use the local data to make an adjustment. You can't appraise a house on this street. Any appraisal that did that right now would say, well, here's the value right now. Now what is it going to be when a solar farm's there? And how would you get that adjustment? It would be in an impact analysis like this, or some form of national study that would show statistical analysis.
And you're from all of these that you come up with, you're saying that there is absolutely no impact?
I'm saying that if you look at the data, and you look at all the data that I present, there's a plus or minus of about plus 7% to about plus 10%. And the aggregate of all those numbers comes up to about a plus 1%. So, in any real estate transaction, you're going to get about a plus or minus 5%. You know, you could sell two identical houses, and depending on who bought it and what day it was, plus or minus 5% is probably about right, because there's a lot of intangibles that come with real estate. If you find, if you do an impact analysis, and you come up with a 3% impact, whether it was plus or minus, it's negligible. That's in the, that's in the standard deviation of what you would see from that analysis, and you would say it has no impact. So, I mean, technically, you could say that, you know, in some of these, I found a slight negative, and some of these I've technically found a slight positive, but the aggregate shows that there's essentially nothing you can derive that's outside of the normal static of real estate transactions. And that's what that is. And again, there's, we can expand on that. I don't know if you want me to go into...
I have some other questions to expand on.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Tom, how many more?
I have one more after Rich. I have maybe seven or eight questions to him to clarify, and I think bring some of these misunderstandings to a, to a point of understanding.
Can you hold on one second?
Is Mr. Kirkland, will he be available after today if this thing?
He will not be.
Because this is all subject to him. We're going to have to struggle through this, the right...
I apologize. I have a conflict on the 21st.
...cross-examine him if there are people here that if we can figure out who's doing what, if somebody has questions for him. So we, we need to work through that. If you want to do your direct, and then we give it out, we need to figure out how we deal with questions from him.
But before we go, commissioners, why don't we talk about where we go at this point? We're going to let these folks finish, okay? And then the question is, are we having breakfast together? How many of you, by show of hands, is this okay to ask and intend to speak tonight?
...about an external obsolescence. Why are they, why are they holidays, do solar farms?
Okay, so, let's let you guys go ahead and finish, and we'll be thinking between now and then.
I've been trying to take notes standing up. I'm not sure I can read my own handwriting here. Mr. Kirkland, in your profession, appraisers use a term called external obsolescence. What is it?
External obsolescence is any kind of negative influence on your property value. That would be really the question that you're asking me here today is, is there an impact from a solar farm?
Are there standard qualities or factors that create an external obsolescence?
Yes, there are.
What are those?
And I list these in my report when I talk about the harmony with the area, starting on page 38. Again, I've done a lot of research and looked at other studies, looking at other types of uses, but also in my own impact analysis. The number one cause of an impact or significant impact on a property value is hazardous material. I've worked at a transformer facility, issues coming in there. Again, there's, again, any kind of hazardous material that has already been testified to, and again, I'm going to rely on Tommy Cleveland's testimony that there's no hazardous material through the solar farms. The next big factor that would cause an issue would be odor. I've done solid waste facilities. I've looked at those, wastewater treatment plants, poultry farms, things that can really impact adjoining property owners who will not be able to visually screen it or even be able to close off from that. Next would be noise. Again, the noise, I've been at a lot of these facilities. I've never heard anything at the fence line. Noise would be anything from a trucking facility, airports, railroads, and could even be, I've looked at one with an amphitheater before. Traffic would be the next issue. Again, there's no traffic associated with a solar farm that would cause any issues. It's got less traffic than a single-family house once complete. And stigma would be the next category where you'd have an impact, which is largely more based with adult establishments. And finally, the last, and also the smallest area where there's an impact that you can measure, you go under appearance. Typically, appearance is something that can't be screened. I've done impact analysis, looking at, say, billboards, water towers, things of that nature that were up high that had negative impacts on the, basically inside the shade of those. And so those are, those are the categories in sort of descending order, and appearance is the only area that really is a question for solar farms, and it's also the smallest category of potential impact.
And is the testimony here that this solar farm will be screened?
Yes, that is my understanding.
So your testimony then would be that this solar farm does not possess any of the qualities of an external obsolescence?
Correct, that's screened.
And that would be the same for the 600 studies that you have done across the country?
Yes.
That they don't have, that they don't possess external obsolescence qualities?
Correct.
Does that explain why all 600 of them have the same result?
It does.
Okay. Do, using the methodology that you're required to use as an MAI appraiser, does the underlying purchase price of a home make a difference?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Does it make a difference whether, when you're studying comparable homes, does it make a difference what the cost is of a home, if you're comparing comparables?
As long as I compare similar to similar.
Okay. You were talking about making adjustments. When you make adjustments, are you using the standards required of your profession to make those adjustments?
I am.
And those are a very set type of equation and variable?
They are.
Okay. Is the point of a matched pair to find one home next to a solar farm and one home not next to a solar farm at a some distance away, but in the same general timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. So that when you have different years in these studies, you're not comparing a home sold in 2012 with one in 2017?
Correct.
You're comparing 2012 to 2012. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Have you been audited by third parties?
I have.
Have those third parties looked at your methodologies?
Yes.
Have any, are they, were they certified appraisers who audited you?
MAIs, yes.
MAIs. Has any MAI or other certified appraiser who has audited your studies found your methodology to be deficient?
No.
Very important question. You've been to this, this area, this community?
Yes, sir.
You've been to communities all across North Carolina with solar farms?
I have.
You've been in communities in 16 states looking at solar farms?
I have.
Okay. Is there anything about this community, any unique factor that would suggest to you that it operates according to different market standards than every other quasi-rural area in this state?
No.
Okay. Is there any factor, anything about this community that would suggest or demonstrate that it would operate to unique market forces different than other similarly situated communities across the country?
No.
I have no further questions.
I object to that. Always wanted to say that. Because we are unique.
We have...
I, I...
Go ahead.
We have a horse that I'm going to continue to, well, I'm not going to say that. I do want to make one more observation, and it's just about pictures. And I wish, I wish we, I don't know, your submission to us is probably not available to be put up there, is it?
I don't know. I don't have a digital copy on me.
You know, just as I, and this is, I promise I'm done after this. As I'm looking through this, and I've, I've mentioned, there's only one or two matched pairs in a lot of these. And that's a, that's an honest complaint I've got. To me, it doesn't give a broad picture over time, but you have an answer for that. But as I'm looking at these pictures, you know, this one is White Cross, and y'all can't see it, but it's all farmland around that. Looking at Wagstaff Farm, Roxborough, farmland. Pine Valley Solar, no housing, or not very much, farmland. Neil Hawkins Solar, Gastonia, mostly farmland. Summit Ranch Land Solar, big one, 2,000 acres, farmland.
Well, again, I would say that there's subdivisions on three sides of that four-sided parcel, so...
I stand corrected. Chapel Hill, I mean, just doesn't look like there's much there. I really can't tell. This is Tracy Solar in Bailey, North Carolina. Looks like there's something down here.
There's a subdivision going to the west, or east, excuse me.
Oh, my goodness. This one is Midland. A couple streets there, but it's mostly appears to just be farmland.
And that's the one that, where actually the mark, the marketing package on that is it being preserved as solar. They're actually...
The one that we got from, from y'all? The, the marketing package?
No. The, what, the broker, the land sales going next to it, they said it was an advantage because there was so much development coming that way, that this area was not going to be developed. So the subdivision development was definitely on the table for that area.
One other question, the big one. Let's see, and now I've ripped all my pages out and won't be able to, y'all quit laughing at me. The 80-acre one, that one was, was that Carrotuck, Maycock?
80 megawatt?
Yeah. So that was the big one. Do they have zoning out there?
They do.
So is this an incorporated area? Is it unincorporated?
I'll have to get back to you about that. I don't recall from the proceedings, but we did have a meeting with the county, so I don't know if it wound up being incorporated as part of that, but I don't believe it was, but I'm not sure.
I have a question. You said, you said the first time you're going to be back before, but then...
I can submit written...
You're not going to be here, so I, so how are you going to get back before you're not going to be here?
I can submit written material, but I haven't...
Well, you can send Nick.
I have, I have, I have an assistant who, a trainee who can show up.
You'll never be available, or?
Well, I just not available on the 21st unless my conflict resolves. If there's a different date, I'd be happy to come back. I just, I cannot be here that evening, based as my calendar currently is situated.
So if we set a special date?
Yeah, we could.
We could do that.
All right, my last question to you. Can you say to this board, based on your professional opinion, that a 428-acre solar farm, is that, how do you think that's going to affect?
Again, it is my professional opinion that this project as presented is not going to have a negative impact on the adjoining property values.
All right, guys. All right, Tom?
Thank you.
Next?
We have Reynolds Neely is our last one, but if Reynolds comes up, Tom...
Hold, hold, hold.
I'm sorry.
We've got to resolve how we're going to deal with questions from anybody who's opposed to the solar farm.
You mean about after we're done with these folks?
If, if the appraiser's not going to be here again, then they need the right to cross-examine him if they have legitimate questions, and if we can establish somebody who has standing to do it. If he's not going to be here again, or there's a chance he might not be here again, then they need to have a chance to ask him some questions tonight.
So then, counsel, you're recommending that we press on with, with the other side as well?
No. They have a right to cross-examine the applicant's presentation. It doesn't affect what they do down the road.
I thought that we've been subject to cross-examination this whole time.
Well, I don't think we made it clear to the audience that they...
They, they don't, they don't know they have the right to ask him a question.
Okay, so Jay, if you could lay out, you know, we're not attorneys here. You all know that. So Jay, if you would lay out for us what this would look like to continue on?
Those in opposition have the opportunity to ask the appraiser their own questions. And it's a matter of who's going to do it, or how many, or if there's one person that can do it, if they have some questions. They have the right to do that right now, while he's giving his direct testimony.
While he's still up.
Jay, shouldn't they be able to ask anybody any question?
They can, we can, we did. I mean, they have the right to ask any of these witnesses questions.
Yeah.
And, and so, and we can backtrack through that, but right now, while we're on the appraiser, we can deal with him.
Since he won't be here.
He, I only drew attention to him because he's not going to be back. Or if we do it on the 21st, he's not going to be back.
They're both committed on the 21st.
The engineer?
Yes.
I mean, we're going to ask general questions. Anybody have any questions they want to ask the engineer from the very beginning? I don't think they have anything for him.
All right, so...
Couple of hands in the back.
All right, so let, before we, before we move ahead, kind of what our impression was is they would lay out their case, and then we would be done with them, and then folks from the audience could come up and speak. But I think that's not right. I think they have an opportunity to cross-examine?
Correct.
Okay. So, does anyone have a question for... So does anyone have a question for the engineer?
And, and they're going to have to come forward and give us their name and be sworn. And, and Tom, I don't know if you want to go through the exercise of...
Can we do this? If you intend on speaking, would you all come forward so we just have to do this once, and we'll swear you in?
Good, don't worry about it.
Yeah, I don't want to ask.
Good time to do it.
I just wrote it down somewhere. Some questions, they were talking.
Yeah.
Lay your left, and raise your right. We can do this two times if I need to. You got it? All right. Do you all swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay. So if you will, please write your name on this legal pad for me.
Well, I don't know which one was which.
Depends on if you want to talk to the engineer, you may be the first.
We need to ask, just, just, this is just to ask questions, it's not to present what we're going to present.
It's not.
So...
But, but, but we'll be, but we'll be sworn in and being, all right?
We need a procedural, procedural, procedural question. Okay, so are we, you, these are for people who want to specifically ask questions first? Or you want everybody, who do you want, and in what order do you want us to decide?
Everybody jumped up. What we're going to get to first, or who's who has a question?
I'm going to put my name down at the bottom, okay? Because I am, I'm a general, I'm going to, I just... Okay.
We just flip a coin and then...
That's, this is general comments, that's me, okay? There we go. These are the... Yes, ma'am, you help me so much. What is it? We're just starting. Right, but I mean, what's this about general comments versus...
Just support the engineer.
And you have questions for the engineer or the appraiser? Okay. I just want to present mine, regardless of...
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Let's see. That's for the engineer.
Engineer and the appraiser.
Yeah, the appraiser, I want to say something to him. Gary, how you doing?
Trying to make it, Ron. You been doing all right?
Yeah. I just wanted to check, what do you want to say?
What's up?
I took this home one time, and it didn't work. I don't get any attention at home.
I had to take it out of his ear.
Yeah. You did.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Klusman.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, so here's what we think we're going to do, okay? We're just trying to do the right thing. So what we're going to do is there are some folks that have some questions. I think she has a question for the engineer. There are some that have some questions for Mr. Kirkland. So we'll process those, and then we'll allow Tom's folks to finish. And then our plan at this point is to recess for breakfast. And so we'll recess, and we're going to take some time. The next time we meet at 6:00 PM will be on October 21st. So we will continue this, but where we'll pick up is with your public comment, okay?
Okay.
So everyone kind of understand what we're doing? Some folks will have some questions for our experts. We'll answer those. Tom will finish up, and then we will recess this quasi-judicial hearing, and we will reconvene. We get to see you again, and that'll be on October 21st. That'll give you time to get your thoughts together, and then you'll be able to come and speak, and we'll finish up then. Everyone understand? So there will not be a vote tonight. Okay? I don't, ay, 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 don't need that. We don't need that.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So you're on. What's your name and...
My name, I can't even talk now. My name's Kathy Webb, and I had a couple...
Kathy Webb.
Kathy Webb.
Welcome.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions, just from listening when they were talking. One was, they said that FLS, which is supposedly owns Pine, what was it? Pine Renew, Pinegate Renewables. That's the cooperative solar that does business, is China Grove Solar. There's information from the Charlotte Business Journal that says a company called California-based Cypress Creek Renewable Energy actually purchased FLS in November 10th of 2016. Is that correct?
In fact, that would be your...
Sure, that's, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, so we're, but we're working actually with a company out of California.
No.
The man.
Okay. But a company out of California owns the company in Asheville.
The man.
They didn't, they didn't, they didn't both make...
Hey, let's, let, let me, hey, let, before we go any further, let, let me, let me give some ground rules, okay? Because this is just so we keep things rolling and we don't get personal with stuff. So you'll address the board, okay? Not someone out in the audience. And once you have your question, if you kindly step aside and then let the, the person that it's directed to come, come up and answer, but that way we don't get this back and forth going with the audience, and, and, and so you direct the question and answer to the board. Okay?
Again, so this is Latham Grimes. Without going into too much detail, so there was a company that is a California company called Cypress Creek Renewables. They originated this project about two years ago. And so the project was purchased by Pinegate in the late spring, and so we're working on behalf of Pinegate. When I mentioned Pinegate and FLS as a precursor, that, that can be a little confusing, but Cypress Creek did, did purchase a company called FLS back then. Most of those individuals now work for Pinegate in Asheville, actually in the same building that they used to work for. So that's a little confusing, but Pinegate is a separate company, they're based in Asheville. And so, but the project was started by a California company, which incidentally is why it's called China Grove Solar, because they didn't realize that China Grove is not Salisbury. But we were in North Carolina, and we realized they're different, and it's a poor name for this solar company. So anyway, that's the, that's the difference. Does that answer your question?
Kind of, but not. Okay. The other question that I had was about the vegeta, vegetation planning. Now, they said that if there's, they said that if there's wooded areas, that they were not going to do vegetation, that they would leave a area of the woods. Now, we're talking about deciduous trees. So my daughter in particular, from her house, is going to have a view of tall trees and see a fence on the other side of the tall trees. So I feel like there should be some type of planting blocking the fence, even though there's going to be a border of trees that they leave there too, because she's still going to be able to see it. And another issue was, they didn't say anything about planting pollinator plants or, pollinator plants are native plants, which is a concern to me, because we have honeybees. And this is a, this is a huge forested area. When you look at it on this piece of paper, you know, it, it looks like a little piece of paper, but if you drive around the area, this is a huge forested area, and it's going to affect our honeybees with the pollination. And I've got other things that I'll speak about later on that. So are there, are there going to be any pollinator plants or any other type of vegetation that's planted in the areas where the trees are left?
Again, so... So this is, this is Latham Grimes. So actually, and we're having another hearing, and so I will have some more individuals from Pinegate. Pinegate actually is one of the foremost companies that does pollinator habitat. They, you can Google it, there's a lot of, they have some projects in Oregon and in North Carolina. They work with NC State, they work with the Nature Conservancy. So they're one of the best companies for that, actually, and so that can absolutely be, be a part of this. And this is more a general statement, too, and, and Ms. Webb, I, you know, I believe you were invited to our community meeting, and...
We were out of town because it was in the middle of the summer.
And, and so, you know, what we did for folks who were there and who, who gave us their, their address and their email address, and what we would do for anyone here, I mean, like I mentioned in the beginning, it wasn't just lip service. We want the project to work well with its neighbors, and we're prepared to do the things at the buffer that really fit that person. So if it's existing trees, if it's planting a new buffer, if it's, in one cases, existing trees, and then a space, and then a buffer, we'll do that. And so in lots of counties, there's a process where we have a, you know, a, a planning board, and then a, a board of commissioners, and there's two meetings, and we start this public process and get in the conversation, and then we work with people individually. And I've, I've worked individually with 10 or 12 people who are in the community, always about, I mean, I care deeply about how this thing impacts everybody that it's, that it's going to be near, and it's important. And so we're willing to do things that make it, I, I believe if you can't see it, it doesn't negatively impact you, then it's the best neighbor you can have. And so, and I've got cards, and anyone that, that is near or abuts, that hasn't been able to work with us directly, please take my card, email me, and, and between now and the next meeting, we'll talk about, very specifically about your property, and come to it and help, help figure out something that, it might not make you definitely want it, but at least makes you feel like you understand what you're getting, and you're being treated fairly, and, and there's some give and take there, because that's what we want. And that's, I, I, anyone that I've dealt with, that's what we're trying to do, and we're happy to do that for everybody.
And the, the other comment that I wanted to make was, we were talking about the lifetime of the solar field itself. We were actually approached, they were wanting to lease our land too, and we were told for a 40-year lease was what they were doing. So that's all I've got.
All right. Thank, thank you, Ms. Webb.
Thank you.
All right, who's next?
And, and these are opportunities to ask questions of the experts. If you want to hold your comments for when you guys present at the next meeting, that, that's certainly acceptable, but this is your opportunity to ask questions of these experts that testified today.
Supposed, go ahead, come on up. Really specifically, we've asked these two gentlemen because they won't be back. So if you have questions related to appraisal, if that's the right word, or, and engineering, then let's hear from you. Welcome.
My name is Kerry Pinkston, and I do have a question for the appraisal, and it regards a couple of things, issues that the engineer brought up. The first issue is the engineer indicated that the low voltage, the low voltage wires that connect the solar panel patches to the substation would be below ground and above ground. Now, to me, above ground presents a question as to why that X-factor wouldn't apply, because they're going to be very visible, because they're going to have to be on telephone poles if they're above ground. I've never seen any wire that self-suspended itself in the air. So I question whether that X-factor wouldn't apply if they're going to have telephone poles on this property. The other issue I had, he brought, the engineer brought up, was 100-foot plus topographic elevation changes. And I think at that point, 100 feet of elevation change is going to put a lot of this solar property in view of my neighborhood, which is Neale Estates, and I'm one of those fortunate people who can look out his back door and see the forest, but from the proposed lines, it looks like I'm going to be one of those people who looks out, out of his back door to a lower elevation and see solar panels. So I don't know. I, I just question whether a view of a solar panel versus a view of forestation has no negative effect on my property value and that of my neighbors.
All right, so you had an engineer...
But I would like to answer that question on the X-factor. Why does that not apply? That was the appraisal. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, and somebody, yeah, do you know more about the specifics of...
Topo question?
No, the, the power lines, and if, where there may be some overhead lines? I was speaking very generally, but they could be, some of them could be underground, some of them could be overhead, getting to the substation. And I don't know the specifics of this design. Maybe Latham can speak to that.
Power lines throughout the community?
Well, that, well, that's right, with search...
Pardon me. Our community has all underground service. The only telephone pole on my street is the one in a corner of my yard. Everything else is underground, and the entire community of Neale Estates is that way. You can ride through there, and you will find a telephone pole that serves an area, but then everything else is underground, to pad-mounted transformers that serve the individual houses.
So in, typically in construction, and, and it would be true here, we want to have underground burial for all the same reasons. It's, it's safer, it's easier, there would be conduit, and the, the wires from the different sections would all go. They typically would go above ground when they connect with the substation, obviously. And, you know, a caveat might be, so we have a flood plain, a big flood plain through the middle, we may not be able to, you know, we may have to go above ground to connect across the flood plain with a couple of poles. We, we can do directional boring sometimes, but the vast majority of the wiring is going to be buried. You will not, you will not have telephone poles throughout the site. It would only be in proximity to the substation, or perhaps if there's a, a wetland and impacted area where some, you know, trenching does not work.
All right, thank you. All right, is, uh, anyone out? Yes, sir.
I want to explain...
Uh-oh. Have you been, have you been, have you been sworn at? I mean, sworn in?
Yes, thank you. Corey Howell, Kimley Horn, just wanted to address the question about topography. And I want to go back to the overall view, I think that'll help. I don't have a topographic map in here, but just generally speaking from experience and looking at this site, and as I stated earlier, the areas that you see that are in blue, any blue lines or blue hashed areas that you see here, those are flood plains, wetlands, or streams, and those areas are always at the low point. And so in, in general terms, the majority of this property, the perimeter, in a lot of cases, most cases, is, is the higher point, and that, you know, the low point of that, what was referenced earlier by Mr. Kirkland, was approximately 100-foot difference across the property. A lot of that is, is, the topo is going down into the site for a lot of cases. And so, you know, it, we don't have a situation here where there's a lot of slopes going up. Most of the slopes are going down. And so the buffer that we maintain around the perimeter, where there's existing vegetation to remain, or the buffer that's being planted around the perimeter, will grow up right in front along the, along the public roads or along the edge of the project to prevent visibility into the project.
All right, thank you. All right, questions for our... All right, questions for our two, our engineer and appraiser?
Okay, my name's Ron Webb. I live on Webb Farm Road, and my question is, how are you gonna keep the panels clean? How are you gonna clean the panels?
I can speak generally about the industry than somebody may be able to speak something more about the plans for this site, but generally, in, on the East Coast, there's enough rain to keep the panels clean, and, and folks aren't out washing the panels. The exception to that may be, uh, over five, ten years down the road, there may be a buildup, and they wait, they could be washed at some point in the future, but it's not something that regularly occurs. It's just rainwater keeps them, keeps them clean. In, in more desert areas, where dust is a problem, you don't get much rain, they are actively cleaning those panels.
How do they clean them out there?
Some use some robots that scrub them. Most of the time, it's just buckets of water and people.
What about sprinkler systems?
I, I'm not as familiar with the industry out there, but, uh, I don't believe there are anybody's installing sprinklers. The, the places where you have to wash the panels, water's more valuable, so they're very careful with water in those places. But just to reiterate, folks on the East Coast are, are not washing modules.
What about the cost versus hydro versus solar?
Hydro specifically?
If, if you, uh, develop a, uh, one kilowatt hour of hydro versus how much it costs to develop a one kilowatt hour of solar?
Yeah. I don't know those numbers perfectly, but you've got really small hydro, that in the right place can be pretty cheap, but there's very few locations where you can produce much electricity. The places where you can put really large hydroelectric dams, there's already dams there, uh, for the most part, so there's not a lot of opportunity to, to build a lot of new hydro.
What's the difference in the cost?
I know in the Pacific Northwest of the US, where there's a lot of hydro, electricity's cheaper there, and it's about the same cost that, that new solar systems cost to produce kilowatt hours, so. It's comparable, I don't, I can't get into the specifics, I'm not sure of the specifics, but it's comparable.
Yeah, let's have a look on that part of it. Uh, we gonna talk about the, uh-
Step up the mic, yeah.
Okay, this has got to do with the, uh, trees.
Again, uh, let's, we've got two guys that won't be here, so if you have a question for the appraiser, if you have a question for the engineer, you know, we, we can deal with trees and stuff, uh, at our next meeting.
Okay, I thought one of them said that he had to get some experts to come in, and kind of plants and stuff, where we're gonna plant. Pollinators. All right, I'll wait till the next meeting, then.
Okay. We look forward to hearing from you. All right, yes, sir.
My name is Gary Trossper. I live at eleven nineteen Neal Road. I have a few questions for the engineer. With these panels drawing sunlight, will, do they also draw lightning?
Yeah, they, they won't draw lightning, not on a, a macro scale. I mean, there'll already naturally be lightning in this area. A lightning strike in this area is gonna strike something. It might strike the solar panels, but they're not attracting lightning in any way. And the systems are all very well-grounded. They know they get struck by lightning occasionally, and they ground them such that it's very rare to have any damage from lightning.
But it doesn't draw?
It doesn't draw, it doesn't encourage lightning, no, it doesn't. Here, or the neighboring area, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make there be any more likely to have lightning in the area.
You said the magnetic, the magnetic waves were minimum. Will the TVs and internet and cellphones, will thus be affected with, uh, solar panels being around, totally around the house?
Yeah, no, they, they won't be. The one component that has any possibility of impacting those kind of communication signals are the inverters, and there's, uh, federal communications, uh, I forget the last C, FCC, uh, commission, thank you, uh, requires any kind of product being sold commercially, including inverters, to pass, uh, an FCC test that it's not gonna interfere with any kind of, they call it radio communications, but any of that, TV or radio, cellphones. So, those inverters are all certified to not have any impact on communications.
My last question, I think, goes to you, as far as water drainage. When all this is dozed down, all the trees and the surrounding area, how are they gonna control the water from coming into our backyard?
That's a great question. Again, Corey Howell with Kimley Horn. So, uh, an erosion and sedimentation control plan will be put together for the project, and all North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality standards will be followed, all Rowan County standards, um, that will identify temporary sedimentation basins, um, that will, uh, be, be there during the construction process, uh, to capture any runoff, uh, from the site, and treat any runoff from the site.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
Hi, my name's Jackie Wilson, and I live at forty-nine eighty Sherrill's Ford Road. Um, I have a prepared statement that asks lots of questions that actually address other things besides those two experts.
Do you, do you have anything for the-
But I do have something for the, um, appraisal gentleman. So, I'm not an expert, but, um, in looking at the Kirkland report, I'm just gonna read what I've got, 'cause it'll be easier for me. Providing the, uh, property value and the solar farms, the evaluation comparison, from what I could see, the houses with the only closest example being a hundred and seventy-five feet from the solar array. The houses compared were two-hundred-and-eighty feet, one-thousand-and-sixty feet, two-thousand-two-hundred feet, excuse me, two-thousand-and-twenty feet, one-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-nine feet, seven-hundred-and-eighty feet, one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifteen feet, from the closest point to the home on the closest point of the solar panel. Uh, some of the comparisons didn't include the proximity from what I could see. Um, in looking at Exhibit E document, um, that was provided, it shows accessory or principal dwellings in relation to the property line, and there are eighteen properties a hundred feet or less from the property line, as it relates to the proposed farm. None of those eighteen are fifty feet or less to the property line, as it relates to the proposed, um, solar farm. My question is, does the Kirkland report provide supporting data regarding property value comparisons as it relates to this proposed farm? From the documentation provided of the fifty-three partials that are not vacant lots, eighteen have an accessory or a principal dwelling less than one-hundred feet from the property line to the proposed solar farm.
Okay, Mr. Kirkland.
Great, uh, thank you for the question. Um, so, yeah, and this, I think I kind of tried to explain this a little bit earlier when I was talking. When I do distances, I'm not measuring to the property line, I'm measuring from the closest panel to the closest, um, point on an adjoining home. So, that, those distances she's referencing was, you know, ten feet to an accessory structure, that, that's a distance from the, the accessory structure on the adjoining property to the property line. Um, my, my report, I did not have, I did not actually measure distances on that. I was told that, um, the company was going to stipulate that they're gonna have at least a hundred-and-twenty-five feet separation, and so my report ran the analysis, assuming a hundred-and-twenty-five foot of separation. Um, and part of it is, is they're still identifying exactly where some of those panels are going. Wasn't a map available for me to measure?
Is that a hundred-and-twenty-five feet from the property lines?
Again, from panel to home, a hundred-and-twenty-five feet.
So, structure itself?
Structure, yes. And again, and that's consistent with the match pairs I do have, um, in my, uh, file. And supplemental to that, I thought I would point out that, whereas the match pairs, um, maybe don't show as many of those examples, um, page thirty-seven of the report, we have a breakdown of some Rowan County projects and projects in adjoining counties. Um, you can see there that the average, uh, closest home in those projects is, the closest we get is about a hundred-and-ten feet, eighty-seven feet, I mean, they go on down, but they, eighty-seven feet was the closest I measured in those, in the surrounding county area. And, uh, the average, well, the average distance from those was three-hundred-and-forty-five feet, and the median distance was a hundred-and-ninety-three feet. And that's consistent with the data that I've got, um, on the preceding page, on page thirty-six, where it shows over four-hundred projects across the state, where, again, closest homes are around ninety feet, I've got some as close as twenty-five feet. Those are very atypical, um, and probably from some of those, those that I did not represent. Um, so, again, um, in that, so, distance, there's a lot of examples of them being that close. Was there a, was there a second part to that? Okay.
Anything else?
Just other than the fact that I have a prepared statement with questions, and I am gonna be out of the country on October twenty-first, so my question is, how can I submit this tonight?
How long's your, how long's your statement?
I could probably do it in five minutes. I have questions within it, and I can certainly submit it, um, you know, to be reviewed, discussed at the next meeting.
What do you think, Ja-, you, we just wanna give it to the clerk? Yeah. Yeah. Would you give it to our clerk?
Sure. I, I made copies.
All right, and safe travel. Let you go.
Okay. Okay, so I've put together some bullet points, which I'm passing around there, um, that relate to the solar farm, and as concerned citizens, we would like to have these addressed. I've already said, my name is Jackie Wilson, and I'm just gonna make a comment on a few of them. I did wanna say thank you to Latham Grimes, um, for working with me via email to understand what is involved with the solar energy system. He's aware that I am not a supporter of the solar farm in a residential area. The partial beside me runs the entire length of my residential property, four-hundred-and-seventy-five feet. The same partial on its west side borders Salem Lutheran Church property, which includes the east side of the church's cemetery. Um, I am a member of Salem Lutheran Church. I am, however, a strong supporter of the five-hundred-plus Loblawi pines that were replanted in two-thousand-seventeen as a result of the land use forestry plan by Mr. Welch, on this same partial between my house and the church. I'm not an expert, so my question would be, um, is this partial suitable for the purpose of a solar farm, due the, due to the topographical layout of the land, the proximity of a church, church cemetery, and many nearby residences? What additional cost in effect would it take to connect this section of the proposed farm to the other side of the road, as it appears there will be need, there will need to be some way to cross, um, Sherrill's Ford Road to connect to the four-hundred-plus acres and substation? Um, I've tried to read carefully all the documentation provided on the website for this meeting. Um, in looking at the North Carolina scenic byway, the proposed solar farm will be along the stretch of Sherrill's Ford Road that is included in the Millbridge byway. The required finding documents shared, the system would be carefully screened from view. The question would be, how would that be accomplished with a proposed access road off of Sherrill's Ford Road to include two parking spaces? The North Carolina scenic byway document shares, "The Piedmont is a fertile plain with breathtaking views." Does the appearance of a solar farm meet the criteria of the byway, as it is to raise awareness of the protection and preservation of the Piedmont Plain and Forest? Could this jeopardize the area being removed from the byway? Maintenance and upkeep of the solar panels. Who's responsible for ensuring the site is maintained? Will it be often enough? Who do the citizens report problems and concerns regarding the upkeep? We shared concerns and photos earlier regarding the solar farm on Highway seventy. Blown trash against a chain-link fence, grass needing to be mowed, huge trash dumpsters overflowing with waste, landscaped trees sparsely unevenly planted and leaning. Is this providing harmony to our area? My property value, I've already discussed. So, my question, my comment is, as the staff, um, reported, this is a large solar farm. There appears special factors, residents in closer proximity, residential areas, uh, substation involvement, scenic byway, wildlife preservation, et cetera, and other points addressed tonight that would warrant additional time. So, as concerned citizens, we are requesting the board commissioners to continue to lay this, um, with open communications to address these questions. I am in an area with the, um, where the buffer doesn't appear to be tall enough if it's only ten feet, especially along the border of Sherrill's Ford Road. Um, that area does drop off, we've had many wrecks and cars go down there, so I know it's gotta be taller than ten feet, so. I appreciate you letting me speak tonight.
Thank you very much. Tom, we'll get you a copy of that, and if y'all wanna respond. All right, uh, who's next?
My name's Kathy Webb, and my question is, it said that the setback would be fifty feet, but it said that it would be fifty feet from the solar panel, not from the fence that goes around the solar panel. So, how far is the fence from the actual solar panel to the fence, so that we know, because it's gonna be closer to us, if that's the case?
It's usually about ten, ten to maybe fifteen feet. You should be able to circulate a pickup truck outside of the panels, but within the fence. So, fifty feet from the property line to a panel, the closest, and then you could have, maybe so the fence might be forty, you know, thirty-eight to forty feet off of the property line, the six-foot chain-link fence, and then you'd have your buffer outside of the fence, between adjacent property and the fence. That's where the buffer would go, or the existing trees would remain.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Come on, it's only, it's not even ten yet. All right, is there, is there anyone else that wants to ask a question of the engineer or the appraiser? All right, then, Tom's got one more. Tom, we want you to have us out of here.
It'll be real fast. Reynolds, come up. Tommy Cleveland, I got one question for you. Um, Mr. Cleveland, as you come up, we stated in our packet of materials that a solar farm generates in one month, a number, the same number of vehicle trips as a single-family home generates in one day, which is around nine to ten vehicle trips. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, that, excuse me, that would be reasonable, yes.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Mr. Reynolds Neely. Mr. Neely is a professional planner. He has worked for several decades, uh, for the city of Ashboro. He was-
Did you say seven decades?
Several decades.
Oh, I was gonna say, man, you look good.
Can't we see? For the city of Ashboro, he also has consulted with quite a few municipalities and counties, um, including, uh, work advising them on, um, solar farms. Um, I'd like to tender him as an expert on the subject of what is and is not harmony, and on how to read and interpret a land use plan.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, counsel. I, I appreciate being here late. I've worked many late nights, and I understand how, how that can, can get to you. As he said, uh, my name's Reynolds Neely. I'm from seven oh three Sunset Avenue in Ashboro, North Carolina.
What's your first name?
Uh, my first name's Ryan. I'm afflicted with my middle name, and it's Reynolds.
Reynolds, okay.
Just like the tobacco, only I don't get any of the money. So, um, anyway, I worked in, in Ashboro for a full career, and, uh, actually, I'm still part-time there. I have, during that career, consulted with many small towns. I have a, a, a soft spot in my heart for small towns. I work a lot, uh, have worked for years with the town of Liberty, uh, in particular, uh, on a continuing and ongoing basis. And during that time, I, I've seen this industry develop. I have helped write- I have helped write regulations controlling hearings like this and the regulations that go along with that. I have reviewed applicants like these for the town, and just as you have your planner doing for you tonight. So, I've worked in that arena more than I have where I am standing tonight. I'm kind of a fish out of water. I'm on the other side of the coin. I have also prepared land development plans, written zoning ordinances, all those things that a planner would do over a career of forty years. And what I'd like to say is that you have in your packet, under the tab that is referred to as harmony and consistency, you have my summary statement on page one, where basically I say that it is in general harmony, the plan that you have submitted, and all the testimony that's been given about the way it will be developed. Taking that information, I am, and my planning background, and looking at your documents, I am saying that it is in general harmony with the area, and it is in conformity with the adopted county plan. If you look through my report, I give some analysis, very much as your own staff did earlier tonight. And then on page four, I begin my discussion of harmony. And the point I want to make on harmony is, in land use, harmony isn't that it's a similar use, that it's the same use. I mean, in rural agricultural areas, you permit churches, fire stations, schools, agribusinesses. There's a whole range of uses that are considered in harmony within that RA district. The fact that the solar farm is listed as a permitted use, subject to the standards of a special use permit, assumes that it has already passed a level of in harmony at the time that that ordinance was adopted. Again, because it's a functional use, it's not, the harmony issue doesn't really, the size of the issue doesn't necessarily impact the harmony. The harmony is going to come from externalities. What I mean in externalities is very much like the appraiser. You have things, noise, dust, traffic, light, all these things that come with any use. And what I would say from a solar farm, in all my years of planning, I've never found any use that could be located near another use that has less externalities than a solar farm. The only thing I can come up with is not even agriculture, because you have poultry, and tractors, and dust, and all kinds of things there, maybe a stand of trees. Unfortunately, a stand of trees, if it's agriculture, doesn't increase your tax base like a solar farm will. I go through several pages here where I cite legal cases and all sorts of other issues. For your time tonight, I'm not going to read through them. Basically, the court cases have succinctly stated that appearance isn't necessarily a factor that you look for in harmony. An appearance of a grain silo, for instance, might not be, or a cell tower, may not be taken exactly as a reason for non-harmony. So, again, if you go through my report, you will find that I've cited several of the issues brought to bear in your general conformity of your land use plan, areas west of I-95. And I've listed there, starting on page eight, why these are in compliance with the plan, why the subject application is in compliance with the sections of your land use plan. I'd be glad to go through those individually, but if you can look at them on page eight and nine. And again, my conclusion is that a solar farm is in harmony, it is in compliance with your land use plan, and that would be my opinion.
All right.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
In your professional opinion, if our zoning called this a utility as opposed to a solar farm, would you have the same opinion?
What it's called really wouldn't matter. Again, I'm going to look at the externalities. And if it's a solar-producing power plant, the externality is going to be the same, whether you call it a utility or a solar farm, or a, as you do in your ordinance, a ground-mounted solar blah 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 over six thousand acres, or six thousand square feet. It, the name doesn't matter. It's the externalities that matter.
Do the counties that you have worked with, do they call it the same thing? Do they make any differences between a utility and a solar farm?
The ordinances that I've worked with all refer to it basically as a solar farm. The utilities are those public, quasi-public utilities that, again, sell or offer service to individuals. These solar farms are generating power not for individual use. That could be done on your own business, but this isn't the case of what we're regulating under the term solar farm.
All right. Anything else? Thank you for being here. Tom, you said, Tom, are you done?
Yes.
I have one question for your team, and I'm done. And that is a question, is a business question on behalf of the taxpayers, all of us of Rowan County. And I don't know the answer to this. You've told us earlier tonight that this is a seventy million dollar project, but I don't think that's seventy million dollars on our tax rolls. There is a certain amount of taxes that are, a certain amount of that project, you're shaking your head, I think, is exempt from taxation. It's a state issue. Can you tell us what percentage of that seventy million is taxable by the people of Rowan County?
I can tell you that by statute, correct me if I say this wrong, twenty percent of the ad valorem property is taxable. Eighty percent is not, but that's a statute adopted by the General Assembly.
That's right, yes.
The property tax is, declines over the years on an amortizing scale. Do you know how that started?
Because of depreciation.
It's something similar to that. I don't think it's exactly that. But what we can tell you is that the North Carolina Clean Energy Association, last May, published a study in which they had gone to numerous counties throughout North Carolina and looked at solar facilities that had been constructed. They looked at the taxes that were received by that, by the county prior to the facility going in, based upon timber or agricultural exemption. And then they looked at the taxable income that was coming in because of the solar farm. And even with that tax abatement, in most cases, the average was about a two-thousand percent jump in the amount of income they were getting from that, each tract of land that had solar. In some cases, it was four thousand; in some cases, a thousand percent, but the average for all of them was two thousand percent.
Because you're going from a farmland tax rate.
That's correct.
And land exemptions.
That's.
To a taxable rate, which is, so if we had a seventy, well, we've got a sixty million dollar project coming in here, and we'll tax all of that at sixty million, but your seventy million dollar project, and I understand there's benefits other than money, so only twenty percent of that seventy million will be taxed by Rowan County.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, just didn't know what the percentage was, but I knew that was, in fact, an issue.
Was there anything else from Mr. Neely?
No.
We have one more person. I want to, before we do that, I want to ask Mr. Kirkland two questions to make sure we have this in the record. You said you had studied approximately six hundred facilities. How many of those facilities were, by character, very similar to this community here?
Defined by character?
Residential surrounding, mixed residential farm timber.
So, when you look at the joining uses, I'd say ninety-five percent of the solar farms I've looked at have a very similar mix of residential agricultural uses around them.
And of the facilities you've studied that are greater than fifty megawatt, how many of those were, had the same similar characteristics?
Over ninety percent of those.
Okay. And did your studies find any depreciation, or any substantial depreciation of, or diminishment of value of a joining properties?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, I got lost in your question.
I'm sorry. It's late. I'd like to, unless you have any further for Mr. Kirkland, I'd like to ask Mr. Harry Welch to come forward. I think it's, sometimes we lose.
Is this Big Harry?
This is, this is Big Harry LLC. Sometimes we lose sight of the fact that local owners, local citizens, local taxpayers, who are of the county, are involved in these projects. And I want to ask Mr. Welch if he was.
All right, welcome. Welcome, Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Edson. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Harry Welch Jr., and with regard to Big Harry, that was a name my mom gave the family trust after my dad died, and his nickname was Big Harry. About ten years ago, before she died, my mother asked me to try to find something that we could do with the property, which we have been in the family since, like, the nineteen forties. I'm the third generation that has lived on this property, and I have been working real hard to do that. And I was approached by the solar company, and I really did some extensive research. I checked with competitors to ask them what type people they were. I checked with Utilities Commission, North Carolina, and they're top-notch. And you gotta realize, I'm living in the middle. I'm the only person here that lives in the middle of a solar farm. And I'm right down from where the solar station is, I mean, the substation. And I have got it, I'm satisfied. They have answered my questions. And I realize y'all have a duty to everybody to get the questions answered. But since I'm living inside of the solar farm, I'm satisfied. My wife's satisfied. We're hoping the dogs will be satisfied. I wanted to say one thing. My daughter was asked about the solar farm last week. She knows nothing about this. And the guy came up and said, "I wish your dad would not make a solar farm. It'll mess up my hunting." And her question was, "He lets you hunt there?" And he replied, "No, he just hadn't caught me yet." Now, with that said, I would love to have the fence up. We have people, and I'm pro-hunting. I really respect people hunting. I don't do it anymore. I respect it, and I like people. If somebody wants to shoot, not on my property, that's great. We have shots at two, four, six, eight, AM and PM. So, I would love to have this just for peace and quiet. But I'd like for y'all to consider this, and thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Welch, welcome, and thank you.
This is, this timber on your property is for investment?
Yeah, we, it's a timber farm. We did it, we were going to do a golf course, a lot of y'all know that, and that didn't work out. And the timber farm was the most economical thing regarding taxes. We couldn't afford the regular taxes.
There have been many people at the community meeting who said they had concerns about the wildlife. Are you going to cut that timber anyway?
Sure.
Okay.
And let me say this about wildlife. I checked, census tells you this, our population in North Carolina has gone up double since nineteen seventy-six, went from five-point-six to ten-point-two-seven. But the deer population in North Carolina, with all this expansion, has increased six-fold. That's what North Carolina Wildlife Commission, if you ask the Wildlife Commission, our deer herds and turkeys are not surviving, they're thriving. So, they're going to find a home.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Welch.
Thank you.
That concludes our evidentiary presentation. Of course, we are going to be back on the twenty-first. We will be cross-examining as necessary. And we would like to reserve the opportunity to close and summarize all the evidence when that time comes.
All right.
Mr. Chair, can I be bold and unpassive? If you find the only one left on the twenty-first, I'd like you to.
If you're the, if you're what?
If I'm the only one that's going to speak.
No, we're going to have a whole lot on the twenty-first, but thanks for the offer. All right. So, we are recessing from this, and again, so what's, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and this is a big legal issue that frankly, we're a little concerned about how everything gets handled from this point. So, Jay, would you take maybe thirty seconds? Because I know a lot of you guys will want to talk to us about stuff, but I want our attorney to talk to y'all about how that works, because I'm not sure that we can.
So, we're technically going to make a, somebody's going to make a motion to recess to the October twenty-first meeting, and we'll take action on that. In the meantime, what we've said is, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, and Ms. Webb and I had a long conversation about that and trying to explain, but all of the information that the commissioners receive should be done through this hearing tonight and the one on the twenty-first. And so, while I appreciate they're your representatives, and you want to talk to them and send them information, I would appreciate it if you hold that and bring it on the twenty-first and present it through the normal channel. Things that do come in, we're providing them to Mr. Terrell and the applicant. But I would appreciate it if we could just refrain from speaking to them, to offer any information until we come back on the twenty-first. That would make my life a lot more simple as the county attorney, and we don't have to weed through so much information at the next meeting when we circulate that to everybody else. So, I would appreciate that, but we'll entertain a motion to recess until the twenty-first.
No move.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so if we don't talk to you, it's not that we don't like you, or that we're being rude. These are, these are what the rules are, okay? So, we'll see you again on the twenty-first. We've still got an hour's work with several other issues that we have to go through, including a closed session. So, we'll recess here for maybe five minutes.
I'd like to make one comment.
All right.
Would you please make this the first item on the agenda on the twenty-first?
Yeah, this will be the first item on the twenty-first. Thank you all for being so kind and for your patience with us tonight. All right, item, item number six. Aaron, are you ready? So, we have the praetorius, SNI A zero four dash one-nine, and we've been told that his wife, Laverne, it's her birthday today. So, we're sorry that we made you sit through all of this just to get to this on your birthday. That's just horrible. I hope you take her out somewhere nice tomorrow night. McDonald's?
That's open on the way home.
Yeah, it's open on the way home. Well, thank you for being here, and happy birthday. Forty-two looks great on you. So, yeah, okay. Yeah, you'll take it. All right. Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a SNI A permit request, SNI A oh four nineteen, for a two-point-six-one-acre mini-storage facility on parcel one sixty-three, one-twenty-one. In this watershed, you have a twenty-four percent built upon, allowed by right, and with the approval of an SNI A permit, that'd be allowed to go up to seventy percent. The current request, the site plan here shows a forty-one-point-six percent impervious surface coverage, so it requires a SNI A permit. An approval of this permit would allow up to seventy percent, should they want to have any expansions after this as well. It wouldn't have to come back to the board. And this current use is in the CBI district, so it is in Rowan County's planning jurisdiction. And the watershed, Coldwater Creek Watershed Four, is at a, is currently utilizing point-three percent of the total allotment we have, and this would get, put us up to one-point-six percent. So, we just need a motion to approve, deny, or table.
This is, this is not in the city limits of Landis?
That's correct. This is in Rowan County jurisdiction.
All right, so we need a motion to approve SNI A zero four dash one-nine.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All that?
All right. Let's get these budget amendments going.
Budget amendments going.
All right, budget amendments provided. We have a motion approved.
No move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By the way, Mike Caskey is a police officer, and he had duty at 11:30 in Charlotte, so he had to leave us. All right, we did budget amendments, and now.
Closed session.
We have closed session. Hold on one second. All right, I move the board now into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 through 18.1183 for attorney-client privilege, communication regarding pending lawsuit pertaining to the county line, and also for personnel issue. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So as soon as we can close the door, we'll get, we back in? All right, so we've come out of closed session. Commissioner Pierce, do you have a motion?
Motion to, oh.[1758.53][1758.53](Laughter). Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to extend the county manager's contract to the year 2025 at his current pay rate.
Second that motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.